All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to CIO Township Planning Commission's regular meeting for September 23rd, 2024. With that, Secretary Walsh will you call about?
I'll call the Commissioner, Siegel.
President.
Moore.
President.
Gobertson.
President.
Walsh.
President.
Hyde.
President.
Reiser.
President.
Rothni is absent.
All right. And also, we have our, both our planning and engineering consultants will be joining us virtually this evening. Right? With that, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any proposed changes or additions to the agenda? Yes, Commissioner Moore?
I would move that we amend the agenda to allow the new business items to follow the appropriate public hearing. So if we look at the new business, and then we look at public hearings, there's two of them, the Maxi Cosmetics new tower, the Blue Zone Hoops. Blue Zone Hoops, sorry. And so that's kind of how we used to do it. We used to deal with it all at once. So the recommendation from Laura is that we move those two items up with their public.
One follows the other. Robber still here?
So that only, that only incorporates the, those two, because there are some other new business items that don't have public hearings.
Right. And then, oh, I think, didn't we want to move the renewable energy, the old, the unfinished business after the new business?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay.
So we do A V after A C.
So A V after A C.
Great.
And.
After A one.
And then these two guys. After their public, the tower project and the basketball facility.
Were you suggesting we do? The public hearings, one and two, and then do the new business, one and two, or were you going to say one and one?
I was, I was, I think I was saying one and one and two and two.
And I'm, is that how you'd like to do it?
I think so. I like, that makes sense.
And we'll have a public hearing and then the new business public hearing.
While they're still here, while it's fresh, while they're.
Yeah.
No objection.
Wait a second.
And I think, was there one more thing you wanted to do? You wanted to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add under A C via new number four, I guess.
You, Derek?
A motion or a resolution to the Board of Trustees regarding the work. For them to work with the O M H and, and all other interested persons to provide an accurate as possible account of the R U's data. And including existing allocations.
So O H M?
O H M.
What did I say?
O M H.
H M.
Oh, and a J. So that'd be A C four.
Yeah. Okay. Any, there was a, do you?
I support her proposed changes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We move forward with the amended agenda. Communications, of course. I just want to say, we did receive an email and it was about the, in, in support of the new cell tower. And that is found in the packet under, under that business item. Any other correspondence or correspondence on the others? We, we did get a few reports that people emailed, but those will be just commissioner reports. So those will be incorporated. The next business day. Right? Then, any other communications? All right. Then we'll move on to, we have no presentations, so we'll open our first public comment. And a public comment, this is the open public comment for people wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing option. So not the cell tower or the Blue Zone Hoops. And oral, any oral presentations or comments should be limited to three minutes, except a representative of a, an organization shall have five minutes. And typically, we start with those who are in, are present in attendance and then move to the public who are attending virtually. So with that, is there anyone here that would like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than the public hearing items? Okay. See none? We'll move online. No? Be sure to raise your hand if you want to participate in public comment. Okay. All right. Then.
Move to closed public hearing?
Okay.
Or?
And support. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just for the, the recording, that was Commissioner Hyde and Commissioner Reiser. First and second. Okay. Approval of minutes. We have our eight twenty-six meeting minutes that were included in the packet.
I move their approval.
Moved by Commissioner Reiser.
I mean, a question. I don't think it, I don't think it will require any revision, but. Not want to hold up. Okay, we had to do with on page three, it was talking about Schedule B. Some items, and there was a third bullet that, oh, here we go. So page three. Schedule B and the third bullet talked about.
Setbacks from property line are drawing in it?
Well, you know, no, it's actually the fourth bullet. That's why I have a problem here. It's, it says that community solar is not yet legal in Michigan. Does that imply that it's, you're not allowed to do it, or just that it isn't defined?
It, well, technically, you have to work directly with the utility. You cannot, and it, as it's defined, it isn't legal. Meaning, an individual can't. Erect and sell shares in a community solar.
Sure, it, there's no, there's no route to getting it approved.
Well, and it isn't, and so it's only the utilities really that control where any. Quasi-community solar is done.
Okay. I just want to clarify. It struck me as, if it's not legal, then that means it's illegal. I wasn't sure that's what we were.
It's unlawful.
It's not yet lawful or not yet allowed?
Yeah.
Permissible?
Do what?
I don't.
It requires legislation.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no path to make it legal, is what I'm thinking it was. And maybe that's less than what you were really saying. So that's why.
How about, instead of yet legal, how about not permissible?
Or?
Currently not.
Currently not.
Community solar is currently not permissible? Would that sound better?
Or the, the legislation has not been passed to allow community solar. Should really be how it's stated.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay. Sorry to make it.
No, but that's probably a better. What?
Let's amend the language.
Okay. So amending it to legislation. Has not been passed to allow community solar.
Thank you. You probably said it just like it's written.
I did. Okay. Any other? Okay. Okay. Is that acceptable?
Of course.
Okay. Support from Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved as amended. All right. Entering our business section, and we have two public hearings this evening. And just to let people know, public hearings, we generally ask the applicant to present first. And then we ask for any clarifications from Planning Commission members. Those will be clarifications of fact, not any deliberation. And then we hear the reviews from our planning consultants and engineering consultants. And then we open up the public hearing to the public. And, and then, once everyone has been heard, we close the public hearing. And then, since we had changed the agenda, we would move then to a new business of deliberation. And it is, it is not, it is not automatic that we make a decision on. Anything in the public hearing the same night. We may or may not. So that's why it's listed as possible action. Okay. So with that, I will open the public hearing for conditional use, twenty-four zero zero seven Maxi Cosmetics. It's a new cell tower and, and it is seven eleven. So if the applicant would come forward and sign in, there are sheets specific to the public hearing. And introduce yourselves too, please. Thank you.
Good morning. Good afternoon. It's been a long day. Good evening. My name is Rob Lobel. I represent the Towers LLC, also known as Vertical Bridge. Who is presenting, who is presenting the proposal for this evening for the cell tower. With me are Ben Varney and Austin Babic, who are with the site acquisition specialists who acquired the site for Vertical Bridge.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. You have our packet, our original application packet, plus the additional information that we provided on Friday. In response to the planning consultant, your planning consultant's request for additional information. So we provided those in addition. I, we're going to start off tonight with just having Ben Varney go through a little bit with regard to the proposal we're actually making, a little bit that went into the process of selection of the site. Ben?
As you already have the package, I'll be as brief as I can, but it's not going to be. Anything that is, that you don't have in your package. But basically Verizon needs coverage in this particular area. They hire, they work with, work up in Vertical Bridge to site a tower in the area that will give them the coverage that's needed. Quite frankly, Vertical Bridge hires Austin and myself to go out and, and find a location for that. The proposal is to erect a tower on Dr. Maxi's property, Maxi Cosmetics. It would be a hundred and eighty foot tower with a five foot lightning rod. It will have a fence around the tower. This will be a monopole tower. Because it's under two hundred feet, it will not have any lights on it. It'll be in a sixty by sixty, sixty by sixty fenced compound in a forest area, forested area with the nearest resident being over a thousand feet away. We'll have chain link fence around it and barbed wire on the top of that fence. And this tower is designed for co-location of other carriers. There are actually work wireless carriers. But the two biggies, or the three biggies obviously are Verizon, E T N T, and T-Mobile. Dish Network is actually a carrier, but they're mostly over the Grand Rapids area in Michigan. Who knows when they'll come here, so. But that is designed for co-location of the, of three carriers. The closest wireless communication facility is nearly two miles south of the proposed tower. Additionally, by locating a tower at our proposed location, we eliminate the need for another cell site. This site will handle the design of two others, another site. So that eliminates the, the other tower, the need for the other tower.
Can I ask why? Why does, why does this tower eliminate the need for another tower?
Easiest way to explain it is if you look at the colored maps, the propagation maps. The height of the tower and the height of the land elevation.
Topography?
Yep. Yep.
Business.
Yep. So if we can do this one, then it will cover the area that two of them were assigned. We had both sites to find tower locations. And because we were able to work at this site, no need to go to the other site.
Color, color on a hill.
Yes.
Gives you more broadcast.
That's exactly right.
It's not particularly complex. Yeah, definitely.
Yep. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah. I had the same questions. Okay, thank you.
We have looked at. Various properties. This was the most ideal because of the elevation. There are no other technological systems out there presently that would. Eliminate having to have a micro site, a macro site, which is a tower. The distributed antenna system that you hear a lot about, those are really designed for like the Michigan Stadium. It's a small area. Also, the small cell configuration is designed for a specific area down on State and Hoover is a small cell. And it's because that corner is so concentrated during the football game. That was put in there to handle that. My son happened to live about three houses from there, so we, we knew what they were doing. When they did it, because there's so many people right there at that location. So that would be why we need a macro site, which is a hundred and eighty feet.
Is that like a booster in that area?
It is. That's exactly what it is. But it's really designed for hundred feet, hundred fifty feet at the most. So.
It's a cell tower we're talking about here. It's about a three mile. The, or circumference.
Yep. When Verizon sites a site. There are two main things are. Coverage and capacity. If you get a, talk about coverage first, if you get too close to another tower, they overlap and they really don't provide the coverage that they need. So when they give us a site, what's called a search ring, they tell us that they need to go between these four towers or six towers or whatever. If you look on that colored map, you'll see where the existing towers are and they say, okay, fine, we need something in here. And I'll provide to them. The other issue that happens is. Capacity because cell towers are now, cellular services are now almost the, I won't say it's the only mode of communications, but it's pretty much. The norm as far as that. And once a tower gets overloaded with capacity. Even on, even on a five G system, you need to do something to offload that service to another tower. And, and that's why you'll see as time goes on, more towers and more towers, simply because of the, the usage of, of the service. The environment, the environmental impact, we do a NEPA report, National Environmental Protection Agency report. Which does a phase one environmental site assessment and they'll address everything. I mean, the wilderness areas, the flood plains, wildlife reserves, historic sites. They'll go to the Indian tribes and see if there's anything unique about that area from the tribe's history. And so we have just a tremendous number of environmental reports that we, that we have to go through to do that. And I'll come back to that in just a minute because it's very important. Vertical Bridge owns a number of towers, hundreds of towers throughout thirty states. And so their maintenance is, is pretty specific. They have a routine maintenance. They have a service guy that drives around quarterly and checks the fence and the drive and anything else that could go wrong. The carrier itself has a technician that goes around monthly to do the exact same thing. And so. You're talking, Verizon would have twelve visits to that site a year. Vertical Bridge is going to have four sites, four visits to that site a year. Now, if something happens, obviously to something at the site, they would have to go out, but the routine is just twelve a year. And that's when they do their inspections and preventive maintenance. They also have what's known as a NAC, National Operation, not, National Operations Center. So anything that gets called in is, is, is a central location, if you will, for all service calls and anything that has to happen. And so that's, that's monitored twenty-four seven. Yep. So that's, that's pretty much the proposal and why we do it. The way we do it. You have a site plan. I think, I know you have, everybody has a package. So this is a site plan and we're, we're proposing. Everything you have in your package is a lot of what I said, and then supporting documentation to that. And then. Carla Wortman asked us to provide additional information based on our first supplemental. Yeah, and we, we have done that. And I'm going to let Rob talk about that additional supplemental.
Since I wrote it.
So you know, we can't include that in our packet yet because it needs to go through a review.
Carla Wortman still has to look at it. Yeah. Sure. We thought that that might be the case under the circumstance. We moved as fast as we could, but we'd only had it about a week and.
Yeah, she gave it to us on Tuesday. We got it back to her on Friday, but you know, your meeting's on Monday, so I understand.
Okay. Then that's good, because then we can give you sort of some background here. We can answer some questions and then you can get the report from Carla Wortman. They can ask us some questions too, if they have any related to it. In fact, I'll kind of go through a little bit of what was in that supplemental information, just so that's true. Let me, let me go a little bit further on some of the things that Ben said. It'll take just a few minutes. And then I'll talk about the things that Carla Wortman asked us to provide additionally. The first thing in a little bit, if you're not familiar with a monopole, a monopole is a, essentially a very tall metal telephone pole. It has no guy wires. It doesn't have a trestle feature to it. It's painted gray, which we have found to be the predominant color of the Michigan sky, unfortunately. So it actually works all better to, you know, do it that color. We started with blue. That did work. So, you know, we, we do this as a monopole, is designed both as a very stable structure and also as the most limited profile thing that we can do. Another thing to talk about is the search ring, which was mentioned briefly by Ben. When each of these individual towers creates what's called a coverage zone around it roughly circular or cellular. That's the reason why you called cellular phones in the first place. Each of the towers creates a cell around it. You try to get these cells to match up with the cells of other existing towers. So that there's no overlap between the coverage zones of one tower and another tower, because the, the overlap zone, where they will have destructive interference. And you'll get limited or almost no coverage in those areas and you don't want to have them close together as a result. But you also want them to be too far apart, because now you've created a zone of permanent deficiency. So you've got to get, so these are nicely bumping up against each other. So it's not a lot of leeway for where you can place this tower and still be able to coordinate with other zones, existing zones. That's why when we talk about a search ring, we're, we're actually talking about, a search ring is probably only about a quarter mile in diameter, in terms of what we're looking at. So it's a very small region we can place it in.
Sometimes you can go out a half mile.
No. I was actually looking at the search ring in this one. This one looks like it's about.
Yeah.
Does that mean only customers within that area will be using it?
No, that's not actually what that means. What that means is, okay, so. I've got. Okay. I got a bunch of coverage zones here. There's, by existing towers. I want to get it right here. I want to get a coverage zone here. I want it to meet up. My search ring is going to be right there. It's going to be in the middle there, so that the distance that this is going is not too close to this one or too far away from this one or that one. So that's the search ring I'm talking about. That's not what it covers. The tower covers this region. But where you got to locate it is somewhere in the middle, so that it, it, it links up nicely with the others. So when I talk about a quarter mile search ring, I'm talking about the place where we have to place the tower, not its coverage zone, which is much larger.
How big, how much is the coverage zone?
It then depends on topography, everything else that goes along with it. The actual coverage zone specific for this site is what's shown on those coverage maps that we gave to you, the red, yellow and green. It'll show the exact size of it. The approximate distance is about three miles in circumference.
In other words, it's benefiting CIO residents.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's exactly what it's for.
Yeah, it'll be.
About three miles?
Oh.
Yeah.
Because it's going to bump up against the other towers.
And, oh yeah, sorry, please.
So you said in the red, yellow and green maps, it shows the coverage. So this is what you're talking about?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay. So, well, that was in.
That was in your package.
That was in the initial package.
What my question about that is, is it doesn't really, it shows a before and after. How did you come up with the after? Did you do actual measurements or is this some computer generated drawing?
It's actually both. What is actually what you're doing with here is a program that has been twenty years in the making. Been refined over and over again in terms of trying to figure out what you're going to be doing. And it's based on this, this original current coverage one. That's based on actual measurements at the ground. That's exactly what it's showing. It's giving you measurements. You see those measurements in the corner here, where it's talking about, you know, the numbers in terms of what it gets. Those are actual measurements in terms of the amount of sufficient coverage. It's decibels is what it's actually measured in, sound. But from the standpoint of trying to figure out what is the best place to place someone, these are actual measurements. The one on the next page has to also include a computer program, because of course you do have to predict what's going to happen. But what you have is a group of R F engineers from our, in this case Verizon's R F engineers. To be able to provide for us an idea about where would be the best place to locate these. And in particular, what it's going to look like after you get done doing this. And their computer program will take in a vast number of variables. You know, one of the biggest of which, of course, is height, with the tower above ground level, above sea level. And they'll go through all of that as part of the process. Answer.
So two questions of fact, is this going to be a five G ultra wideband site?
Sorry.
This is going to be a five G ultra wideband site for you guys?
Most of what Verizon does is five G.
Yeah.
At this particular point in time, they've eliminated three G. They don't do three G anymore. There's still some four G out there.
You're talking five G ultra. We know what five G is, but.
I, I, I'm just curious, because my, my secondary question of fact is specifically this site, and I have to go back and look at the ARDOF map. What's your fiber backhaul into it? Where are you getting fiber from, out of curiosity?
They're probably going to have to do microwave. But, but there is fiber. I shouldn't say it like that. On those high tension wires, it's my understanding that there's fiber there, but, well, not the high tension, the, the lines underneath it. But I couldn't get Detroit Edison to confirm that for me. I know.
Yeah. I didn't get them to confirm much of anything.
I know, but, but I tried confirming, but it looks like it from everything I can tell that there's fiber on those poles. And, and.
For everyone else's edification with Mr. Yapple, is he apple? Mr. Yablet is talking about is how we get the coordination of signals between towers. And what it's, what you're doing is you're talking about, you can be talking about underground fiber cables for purposes of doing that. If that's not feasible, you can use a microwave generator to be able to connect the connect the towers.
But there is, I know, in fact, it's fiber on Deloitte.
So it 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 could be a combination of things, sorry.
So my, I'm sensing that there's a tower on the south side of the township. This would be the more northern part of the township that covers Verizon's so residents over there.
Yeah, there's here, here and here.
This only goes like three miles. And then my other question is, I'm picking back on Commissioner Yablet's question. Will you be, will that service be providing 5G ultra? I mean, I can get 5G ultra when I'm in Ann Arbor or some other locations. But I can't get it on Zeeb and Dexter and our road. So my question is, will that provide 5G ultra?
They will, they will be the 5G, yes, that site.
Ultra, because ultra is its fastest.
No, I I understand.
We don't know.
To be honest, we don't know.
We're the tower builder, we're the tower builders, not the actual party.
Do know from an RF standpoint, and we don't, Austin, we don't have the RF to estimate.
We can ask.
We can find out for sure, but.
Well, I ask because.
It's ultra fast. It's ultra fast.
Well, it's ultra fast and it's now, we need ultra fast. So, I mean, this isn't new, ultra, it's going to be new to our area. Well, I mean, like I can pick it up some areas. Okay, we're we're we're.
The one thing that was mentioned.
Project, why not put in the latest stuff?
No, no, they're not going backwards, trust me, they're not going backwards. It's going to be the latest and greatest.
So the point is to find out, yes, okay, continue.
And I'll find out one way or another in that one. But you did actually raise a point that I did want to mention, capacity, that was one of the issues here. I mentioned how you want to try to locate the towers so that they create a honeycomb of cells with each other. But you also have to do one of the thing which Ben alluded to, which is you have to try to offload capacity issues on the existing towers. On these towers here, this is the current coverage, on these towers here, you can see how, in the one in the corner here, it might be tough to see from there. But you see how it's kind of shaded, it's kind of like pastel color, whereas these ones are highlighted, are brighter highlighted. This one is beginning to experience coverage issues or capacity issues. In other words, this is an analogy, it's not actually the science behind it, but it's a good analogy. If a if a if an antenna can accept five hundred signals per second, on the five hundred first signal, it's as if there's no tower there at all. It's like the capacitor just tripped at that point, your circuit breaker tripped or something. Basically, you have no coverage at that point and you'll lose, you'll lose, you'll lose the the signal, even if you're right there, right in the middle of the height of the of the coverage, you'll still lose the signal because it's having capacity issues. So the tower we're placing here has to be so, not close enough to be able to fit this area in here without overlap. But it's also got to be close enough to get the capacity to help out these other towers with their capacity issues. So as you can tell, this is a, it's almost an art form trying to locate one of these things. Because it takes a lot of detail for purposes of trying to figure out what you're going to come up with. Which also references the fact that you folks are one of twenty-four different agencies that we have to get approval for every tower we do. That we're going, some of them are alluded to, we have to give notice to every Native American tribe in America to ask them whether or not there's any possibility this is a burial site of some sort, et cetera. There's there's Endangered Species Act, there's wetland surveys, there are soil surveys, there's the road commission, there's the drain commission, yada, yada, yada. We have a lot of parties we have to go through and in order to make this thing work, you got to satisfy them all. In addition to trying to locate it in a place where it's actually going to do some good.
Are there wetlands on the air, in the area where you're building?
No, not in the place that we're building, or at least nothing that's going to affect it. Should get closer to the river, yeah, you get into some areas that are that are wetter than others, but they're not going to affect what we're doing. As it stands right now, it's telling us that, they're telling us that we are sufficiently far away to avoid any buffer issues. All right, and now I'd like to talk a little bit about what what they talked about and what's requested is the information. And this is going to go into the things that we provided on Friday, the additional information. I'm going to go through it just very briefly because I'm sure I'm going to get some questions from the folks at Carla Wortman about this. So first thing that they asked about in particular was its compatibility with, sorry, with its alternate sites that are located, and they talked about two of them. One was north across, across north of, north of the river, it's called the Sweepster, it's an industrial site, I-1 site. There's an existing water tower there, which actually AT&amp;T is already located. AT&amp;T, by the way, is very likely to move to our site from the water tower because this will be a better site for them. Just guessing, but I'll bet that's true. The big problem with that one is the insufficient coverage. We provided you with alternate maps, propagation maps, they were in the new one, in the new site that we provided to you, that shows where the new towers are. And you'll see here, that's the, that's the future coverage with the water tower. And you'll see the degree in which the yellow that's placed there, it's significantly less than what would be in the coverage that we are proposing from them. In other words, basically to both the, to the east, I believe, hang on a second.
It is generated with a computer.
Again, it's the same computer program doing the same, same, same analysis with the different locations on. At that same, during the exact same calculation about what would cover that. So both of them are computer projections, our projections are very, very accurate after twenty, twenty-five years of doing this. We've got enough data that we can make these these projections very accurate. Anyway, the this, you'll see that there's insufficient coverage about it, especially to the east of the of the other site. In other words, the site that we're proposing covers a great deal more space. It would necessitate putting up another tower at the, at at best. And more more likely, it would require putting up, it would put up a tower that might not, that might cause destructive interference because it's too close to some existing towers. So it's much better to use the tower that we're talking about for coverage at that point.
If I could jump in real quick, we went to the water tank engineer and asked him about this. And he said, well, the only place we can go on this, this is a hundred, a hundred and forty, Austin?
Yes. Yeah, a hundred and forty.
He said, the only place there is, the top is full with the AT&amp;T equipment, the only place you can go is a hundred and seven feet. He said he seriously doubts, without doing a study, he can't tell us definitively, he said he seriously doubts that the tower, the water tank would have the capacity to handle the Verizon equipment.
Structural capacity.
Because structural capacity without major modification. And it's my understanding that that, that at one time their proposal was to take down that water tank. So we know that there's structural issues with that water tank. Not not the way it is, I don't mean imply that, but put anything else additional on there would be would be major.
I should note, when I'm when I'm talking about these other sites, the alternate sites that were mentioned in the Carla Wortman report, it's not like we're just looking at them now. Every single one of the sites that they mentioned, plus many more, we've already looked at. To be candid, from Verizon wireless standpoint, they're much better off going on an existing structure. It costs about ten percent of the cost of going on a larger, building another site. So as a result, given that circumstance, they'd be much rather be in a situation where they go on an existing, on existing structure. But those existing structures that do exist, there's two of them that were mentioned in Carla Wortman report. One was in fact this Sweepster, the Sweepster site, the water tower there. And as was being noted, the only thing that's available there is a hundred and seven feet, so it's already, you know, eighty, eighty to, seventy-five to eighty feet lower than the site that we're proposing. And on top of that, it happens to be a much lower elevation, about a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet lower, depending upon where you're going and that's in that location. So as a result, you're talking about close to two hundred feet lower, above sea level, in terms of how this, in terms of this this site. So that explains why it's a, it's a poorer site, very much poorer site from a propagation standpoint. The other thing that's really kind of important about this site, this is a hazardous waste treatment site. It's listed in the Eagle and DNR websites as being an existing cleanup site. I brought along with me some copies from the Eagle website showing location, that's that site. That green area is the part two oh, two oh one restricted area, and then next to it is the part two eleven restricted area. That little spot that you see that's that's highlighted, that's the tower, that's the water tower. So the result of which is that this whole site, be candid, we try to avoid sites that have any kind of, any kind of existing environmental issues. And it's it's much a matter of safety for persons who we're dealing with, but it's also a matter of liability. We have to have the parties who go onto these sites, Verizon, AT&amp;T, et cetera, they got some very deep pockets. The result of which is that if they go onto a site that's already contaminated, given the strict liability that's available under federal law for anybody who operates on a contaminated site, even if they didn't cause the contamination, they get, they can be in a situation where they may face some liability in connection with it. That's on top of the fact that we do have to go subsurface on some of these things in order to be able to put some of our equipment in. Soon as we go into subsurface, we are impacting potentially some of the contaminated soil. So we tend to avoid, especially when you've got a better site available, we're going to avoid a hazardous, a hazardous waste site as a general matter. The other one that was also mentioned was the fact that there's a, there is a high tension, or sorry, a high power, high voltage tower that's to the south of the site that we're proposing, it's actually on the same property as us, or actually immediately adjacent to it along the easement that was granted to, for purposes of doing the high tension, high tension wires all the way along it. We also provided, we did a, we did a, a map, a propagation map to show you what the result there, again, it's poorer. You're talking about a height that's something about eighty to a hundred feet lower, the other one's more like two hundred feet lower, but this one's eighty to a hundred feet lower and therefore less capable. Another aspect about these high voltage towers is that, to be candid, they 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 create such a high risk of electrocution to our engineers who have to go up on those towers, we again, as a general rule, especially if there's a better site available, will avoid going on to high voltage towers. On top of that, high voltage towers never built the whole, our equipment, they're they're not structurally capable of handling, they require even more structural reinforcement than would a, than the water tower. And on top of that, because they're operated by DTE or whoever's, I think it's ITC, in this case ITC, they won't allow us access to these sites in any kind of efficient manner. They will, they'll require a lot of, a lot of pre-warning, they'll want to use their own engineers, they won't want us to do any things to the sites regardless. So as a result, these sites, when there's a problem, that we mentioned before about the NOC system to talk about, you know, we have, we're having a problem with this thing and we'll know immediately, they'll head straight out there to go and fix it, they have it fixed within twenty-four hours as a result. It will require one to two months to get it fixed, if it's on, or more, on a, on an electrical tower that's run by ITC or even DTE.
Verizon's only on two high tension towers in the whole Michigan. And they haven't done anything since twenty fourteen on those types of towers.
Two thousand nine.
Was it two thousand nine? They've been requesting for, they have, those two have some issues and they haven't touched those towers because they can't get permission to to upgrade since that was the two twenty fourteen, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they just.
Yeah, they haven't been upgraded since the rollout fourteen years ago. So I mean, they're fourteen years behind current technology because of that circumstance. Sorry.
Ten years behind because we got twenty fourteen.
Ten to fourteen years. I was taking that from Andy provided, I thought he said fourteen. Anyway, so as a general matter, we avoid, as you can tell, Verizon doesn't like going on these towers at all, they like two of them in the whole state. So as a general matter, we try to avoid those. We looked at a number of other sites, possibilities too. As a general matter, under law, under the Federal Telecommunications Act, we have an obligation to make a good faith effort to choose alternate, you know, alternate less obtrusive sites if possible. And frankly, there's no other site that's less obtrusive than this, but that is also, that's also adequate. This site is being placed in the middle of a very mature set of trees. It's only at the very top of the tower it's even going to be visible from, and that only from very close up to the site. You get no, far enough away, you won't see it at all. And on top of that, all of the the bottom portion of the tower will be completely, you know, non-visible, it's not going to be lighted. It doesn't provide any, it doesn't provide any, any dust or noise or fumes, vibrations, smoke. It's a fairly innocuous site, as we've mentioned, only about once a month are you going to see anybody even going to the site, once it's built on an average matter. And we've done everything we can in order to try to find a site that both deals with the coverage zone, that's that's needs to be covered. But at the same time, is located such that it's going to be as obtrusive as we can do it. This site may not be an I, one of the I zones in which it's a permitted use without, you know, our, at the preferable sites. But it is pretty close to and is surrounded by other I, I-one and commercial zones, as a general matter. So we've done our best to try to place this as we can and place where it's at least as obtrusive as we can try to do in that case. And we consider all number of viable, other viable alternatives, this is the best under the circumstances and the least obtrusive given that circumstance.
And there were, sorry. Just to add to what Rob said about the aesthetics, we we provided photo simulations, I don't know if we mentioned that earlier. But they're taken from, I think, four, four or five, four different vantage points. One, one off of West El High, one off of here on River, and then the other was to the, be to the southwest, I think near where that another subdivision is located.
Again, just to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Again, photo simulations are not photoshopped, that's not what that is. A photo simulation is an engineering concept, again, computer simulation, that's the result of doing a variety of things, sometimes a balloon test to take it up to the the location where it's going to be and the insertion of what it's going to, what's going to be focused on from there. It's not a, it's not a guess on the part of some, you know, shoving a, shoving a, you know, shoving a picture of a, of a monopole into it. This is an engineering simulation that's created using standard, engineering standards. So and there were a number of other things that were mentioned in the Carla Wortman report that were less specific, there were, there were more detailed than otherwise. There was things like related to the road, the road structure that they were requesting, we were looking for some, looking for a little leeway on that one. And on top of that, we're also, sorry. On the class C, there's like, you require, under your, under your ordinance, it clearly says you have to have a class C, let's see the reference, the specific reference, a class C road.
Class C roads.
Which requires about twice the width that we're actually providing and requires a different grading than what we're providing in in coverage. We've noted that a number of other cell towers within the township don't have that, they don't have class C roads.
Not a winning argument.
Well, it is a requirement under the Federal Telecommunications Act that have been done that way.
I'd also like to know where that is.
Oh, yeah, I came up with a couple of them that I looked at, and I I will admit, I haven't had a chance to like literally do a exhaustive search. But one that I found was one that was south of I ninety-four and Stabler, doesn't help you any, but it's at forty-two point two eight eight degrees north and eighty-three eight oh nine nine east, sorry. There's another one at south, at south of I ninety-four and north of Jackson, it's at the Fox, Fox Ann Arbor. They have, they have a tower there, it looks like it's just your basic road. I have, again, I'm, I'm saying that just from aerial views that I've looked at, I had not have time to actually go out there and do an exhaustive survey of it. But I think it's helpful. Sorry?
And yet you're claiming it.
No, no, I, because I know those, those two in that circumstance, I, what I'm saying is I think, I did say I think, that there are different, there are different circumstances in that case. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to suggest that the need for a full-scale road under those circumstances, given they're only going to be there once a month with a, with a regular old van, that it's deep within a set of woods and it's a thousand, more than a thousand feet from the road, we're kind of hoping that there's a little leeway there that we can look for. I mean, if we, there isn't, there isn't, but we would really like to, you know, see if there is any, that's all. And there are a number of other things that were mentioned in the Carla Wortman report, which obviously they're going to need to take a look at before you can talk about it. Um, and there are a number of other things that were mentioned in the Carlo Warman report, which obviously they're going to need to take a look at before you can talk about a home or another. Um, but we did want to go through some of the more, the more important, very, you know, the things that are substantively important to. Decision that you'll ultimately make um, in this circumstance and to try to provide your little background. And description of what we provided as supplemental materials.
Thank you. Uh, uh, there are any more clarifying questions from the planning commission of the.
I have a question. So a hundred and ninety feet tall. Right on that?
No.
No. Eighty foot tall tower with a five foot lightning rod.
It sticks five feet above that, it's a lightning rod.
Okay. And, and. I mean, I don't know a lot about cell towers other than. We can track, um, so I've had to deal with cell tower coagulation and trial, but um. Um. Is there, is there any worry uh about should this tower get. Caught on fire, some electrical fire starting? Your people be required to handle that?
Absolutely.
Or we need to get the fire department.
Well, it depends on who gets there first, but probably it would be your fire department that would get there first, but.
Do you do, what they, what do you provide to address that issue?
We come to the sites immediately upon the description of any problem. Um, we get a, a, we get immediate notice of the fact that that's happening. Um, the sites themselves, I mean, as far as the tower is concerned. Um, any concerns that would have to it, and if your concern is, you know, falling um, in that circumstance. Um, no.
Well, I'm looking at servicing the problem.
Okay.
We have nothing at all if we handle that on fire party. So that's, that's an issue.
Well.
But I'm just trying to approach the subject because I.
Right, but the, if there's going to be any fire, it's going to be at the base.
It'll be at the base?
It's going to be at the base. And frankly, we don't use buildings anymore. We use um. Um, outdoor cabinets. And so there's no more buildings, there's no twelve by twenty buildings there anymore, it's all uh. Out there.
Like a metal thing you might see associated with each other.
Yeah.
Right. It looks almost identical to what you'd see at the base of a telephone pole.
Yeah. So.
Okay, just a reminder, we're not.
Yeah, I know, I'm just gonna wait.
Clarifying.
Yeah, I'm not clarifying, I'm just curious, I'll wait.
Okay. So you don't have any, anything that strikes, any weather issues that ever strike your towers?
That's what a lightning rod is for. It's in order to direct any, any, any damage that would be considered by virtue of weather uh, down to the ground level. And if you're talking about wind, for example, that might knock a tower over. Um, no Verizon wireless um designed, no tower designed to Verizon wireless standard has ever fallen. Um, they have, no monopole, um, they have all been, they've been subjected to things like hurricanes. Um, typhoons, uh, you know, water, uh, um, floods, um, even vehicle hits, even airplane hits. Um, none of them has gone down in any of those circumstances. They uh, I mean, you take for example Hurricane Katrina during that time period. Um, the only thing is that we're actually working, all the telephone lines went down. But the wireless communication tower still worked. Um, they were, there, there are several circumstances involving. People being rescued from the roofs of their house because they just had their cell phones in their hand. Um, and they could be, even though their, their whole area was flooded around them, they could be rescued. Airlifted out because they could get to somebody with their cell phones.
In your original uh, in our original submission to you, there is a letter from a engineer.
Right.
Talking about towers and how they fall and how they're designed and et cetera. And he essentially makes that same statement about monopole towers.
They're also designed so that if in some biblical event that takes them down. In that circumstance, instead of doing this, they do this, they crimp on themselves. Um, they're actually designed that way so that they won't, they won't go over completely. Won't topple like a tree, they're crimped like a kaleidoscope, something like that.
Thank you. All right, oh, with you, another.
Are you done again?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so I want to go back to one of your statements or a couple of your statements where you said. Um, where, where you were talking about coverage.
Yes.
And obviously, you know, from looking at the current. Uh, using several areas of the township, we have very poor coverage.
Correct.
And so you're, and you've also said that you have to site the new tower so that they don't. Interfere with the existing ones.
Right.
So, but otherwise, if you, and if you put them too far apart, it would. Uh, permanently affect coverage.
They create a zone of permanent, permanent non-coverage.
There you go, and so looking at your. After you're considering the new tower map, um, there's still. You're, in other words, are you telling us that the yellow and red areas are permanently not going to be covered?
No, let me try to go through that in a little more detail. Um, basically, each particular tower has to deal with its particular area of concern. Um, the area that you see that's still uncovered to the west of the site, you see over there. This tower just doesn't reach it, no tower reaches. If you take a look at the old coverage and the new coverage, there's no change in that, in that, in that, one way or another. If we're going to get to that site, we're going to have to put one there. In order to do it, have to put another tower there to catch that one in that circumstance. Um, so.
East also.
Sorry?
And to the east.
And to the east, um, basically that situation, you got it, they, as mentioned, they cover only so much of an area, create a cell. So what we do is prioritize sites based on what we refer to as trouble tickets. And that's what Verizon refers to as mess. And there are three kinds, we measure, we can actually measure failures of signal, signal loss. Will actually get, you know, information fed into our, our design center and cell field. That actually measures all of this and they can tell how many times the signal is lost or degraded. Um, they also have our engineers who are going out to service these other existing sites. They'll do measurements at the base and they'll be able to tell where there are signal issues. And then finally, of course, people just call in um, and, you know, complain. Um, between those three things, if you get enough, enough of those things on it, pushes it up priority list to try to fill in. As Ben mentioned earlier, um, our origin, their original cell phones, which all they did was do a telephone, you know, telephone signal. Um, we got, pretty much got covered the state. Then we started to having all these texts and access to the internet. Um, use the telephone became, you know, virtually the move, a movable office uh, for people as well as a movable home. Under guard to a number of things that they use it for. So given all of that, the amount of area covered by each individual tower shrunk. Because there's only so much they could cover under those circumstances. So their antennas kept getting improved, getting better um, to be able to do it. But at the same time, you had to put up additional new towers to deal with both that coverage that was first on the shrunk. Plus the capacity issues that were created by virtue of it.
Okay, so you're addressing most of what my concerns are. You're saying this is not permanent, even though you were calling it permanent if you spaced them too far apart. Or place them incorrect, in an incorrect position.
Right.
Um, I just want to voice my concern that if you were going to take care of the red area to the west.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would that leave an island of yellow in between, which is what seems to be being created?
I don't think so, I think based on what you're talking about, I, I, if I understand your, your question correctly, that's not what's going to happen. Take a look at the current coverage.
Yes.
Okay, and you have the areas of red and this band right up through here.
Band of yellow through there.
Yeah, band of yellow going through here. What the area that we're trying to deal with is right here.
You're hitting that red area.
And we're hitting this area here.
Getting rid of most of that red.
Well, we're getting rid of all of that red within the area that we're actually looking for.
Absolutely, but you're not getting rid of all the red.
No, we can't, no, this particular tower is incapable of covering of other areas.
I get that, I just didn't want you to say you're getting rid of all the red, you're not, you're getting rid of it in that area.
Well.
Yes, correct, correct, we're getting rid of it in that area. And then if you were to place a tower to the west at some future point. And get rid of that red, is that what you're?
At some future point, yes, that's possible.
What would happen with the yellow that's in between those two towers? Are you going to be overlapping?
We will be able to, let me put it this way, our engineers will figure out a space. That will cover the areas in there so that they can make a solid green area. That's what their intention is. It's not perfect, okay? It's possible there might be a little bit of yellow here and there. But when they do in fact design this, they do, they can consideration not only where there is yellow and red. But they also take into consideration where there are people who want to have service in the circumstance.
I'm reading that yellow area that you're talking about. And my neighbors are too.
We will, in, in those particular areas, when they do it, our engineer will be looking to try to be able to cover the entire area. All right, they will try to cover the entire area.
I'm just looking at this. Uh, before I saw the map, I was looking at this as possibly covering my area. Or the area that's along uh Dexter Ann Arbor Road there. And it, it's, it, it doesn't seem to go in that direction because of topography, because of features, I know. That's what I was saying. An additional ten feet.
Let me put it this way, we're going as fast as we can.
It will, it, you will see that this tower may include your coverage, okay? Um, depending on exactly where you are.
Because this is just a simulation.
Yes, the three things that kill signal are hills, trees and buildings.
And two or three.
I know, I know. So that's really what you're dealing with is, and I, I, dealing with a customer over in Kent City and. He said, Ben, I didn't answer your phone call because unless I stand at my window, I can't get the message.
I'm right there.
So you may find that this helps it tremendously, not perfect, but better than what it was. I can't promise you that, but.
But we will get to you eventually. Um, we're, like I said, we're doing the best we can, we have to deal with one area at a time. Remember the twenty four different agencies do we have to go through? This process takes almost three to four years by the time we're done from one end to the other, be able to put in a single tower. Um, so it's not a process that gets done overnight. We do it best.
Permanent, when you say.
It will not be permanent. I guarantee you that what, that area that you're talking about in these two areas right here and here. There will be no permanent um gap that's created between those. But when they put together a footprint and when they locate a tower, they take that into consideration, make sure that they aren't creating any issues. Of permanent, permanency in red, in, in populated areas between towers. They do their best.
Will this have the, the triangles on it as well?
Yes, you mean the platform tri- triangle platforms?
And how many of those triangles go on top of?
Um, this has capacity for three, doesn't it?
It, it has capacity for three. And you have to let competitors use your towers?
Luckily, in the, the Federal Communications Act requires us, a lot of people on it. But we're the tower company, so yeah, we definitely want other people to go on this tower.
And, and, and I guess what I'm getting at is, well, I, might there be your competitors of tower companies looking for other sites to do this?
Uh, possibly in that circumstance, but once ours is up. Um, you will be in a position where the, uh, if someone else could go to the, our tower, be able to do it.
Right, people could hang their antennas off your tower. AT and G, uh, T-Mobile would be able to run this tower.
Again, as I mentioned, all, all of the um wireless carriers would rather co-locate.
Yeah, we, we want as few towers cluttering our township as most antennae on there for greatest connectivity with whom our residents, I would think.
Yeah, my planning. You have a ma, you have a maximum height that we can go to, so that was part of what, what, what covers what we can go. So that's where we went to as high as we can get under your ordinance. But on top of that, we, and we got three platforms that can go in there. Some other parties who are not necessarily wireless providers, you know, some other, in cases, even nine one one providers. Um, will sometimes go at a lower height, you know, like in a hundred feet or so, because they can get away with that. Um, but in our case, what we'll normally have is up at that, that highest level. But yes, other, we're looking to put as many of the, um, as many of the wireless providers as possible. Um, onto our, on our, under our tower.
All right, then we'll move, if you could, um, allow Laura.
Oh, Laura, then probably.
And.
Can everybody hear me?
Hello. Hi. Hi, good evening.
So just a couple of things, um, after that, that great presentation that told us a lot about, a lot about information we didn't have, so I appreciate that very much. Um, this property is sixty four acres, I think that was mentioned. Um, located west of Delhi Road and east of the Huron River. It is owned A one general agriculture. Uh, in the zoning ordinance, we do allow um cell towers outside of uh new cell towers as a conditional use. Um, in I one, I two, I three and IRP. And since this is an A one, that is why we requested a bunch of other information about um. Their uh, their propagation maps, the capacity, the coverage area. Um, and all of that is outlined in section thirty six dash one four three of our zoning ordinance. So all of that is required information as part of this conditional use submittal. So I look forward to seeing the rest of that information. Um, I think generally speaking, we have, we think this is a great location for the cell tower. Um, we note that it will not be visible, um, and you know, in most cases. I do want to note that this is a conditional use, so the site plan will come back before the planning commission. Because we have a two-part um conditional use approval process, right? The conditional use comes before you, you hold a public hearing. At some point, you will make a recommendation. This will then go to the board, the conditional use will. And then the site plan will come back through the planning commission at a later date for consideration. And then a recommendation to the township board, so four steps for conditional use. Um, I just want to mention the private road, um, that is a right, uh, um, provision of the ordinance that requires the class C private road. Um, if, if the applicant does not want to, um. Or thinks that they might seek relief from the private road, that would have to go through the zoning board of appeals. Um, the planning commission cannot provide that kind of relief um, uh, for the ordinance. So that would be a variance the applicant would have to request and um, receive from the, the zoning board of appeals. So this evening, um, since there was some information that we just received and we haven't had time to review. Um, I would recommend that you complete the public hearing and um, postpone action on this item. Until um, we can review it, uh, review that new information at an upcoming meeting.
Can I ask a question in connection with that? Is it Laura, is that Laura on the line?
Yes, it is.
She can see her right there.
Oh, jeez, sorry. Hi.
Hi.
So uh, I was, just a question, is it possible for us to do the site plan and the conditional use permit at the same time? It'd save us more than two months worth of process. The sooner we can get this done, the sooner we can keep it into potentially a building site as opposed to the, the window, the winter month window where we can't build at all. Um, is it possible, we could try to do that?
It, so that is not the township's typical process. What I would recommend is that you could submit the site plan um, to start review at your risk, right? So that we can get that started. Um, as soon as the, the planning commission makes a recommendation on the conditional use. We can then move that site plan application to the, to the um, planning commission at your risk. Knowing that um, the board may, hasn't acted on the conditional use yet, it's just not our process.
I, I understand, I'm just kind of looking at what I could, ever I can do to shorten the process and maybe make the window before the winter months.
We, we will work with you, but again, all of that's at your risk since we have to get through our steps.
Understood.
Yep.
That's not a problem, thank you.
I have a question.
I have a question too. Okay, Laura, can I ask this question? Um, specifically, you know, I know the applicants provide us a lot of great answers to a lot of your questions. Why was this brought to us with the required information on your page one saying. There's a significant amount of missing information to adequately review this application. I, I guess, why didn't we push back on the applicant to require them to submit more information before they were able to come to us?
Because the uh, public hearing notice takes about forty five days. And so a lot of times, we um, we provide that notice prior to having a complete review. Of all of the information, we do that, we do that for all, well, all rezonings and conditional uses.
Yep.
Um, just because it takes so long to, to get our required notification um, process to the paper. And to our direct notification requirement, you know, everyone within three hundred feet of that subject site.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Can I mention more?
Hi Laura.
Hi.
Um, I'm looking at the first page of your memo. Where you um. Say the, the township zoning ordinance allows wireless communication facilities as a permitted land use. If located on an existing tower or structure. Or on a utility pole structure. Within a right of way. Or as a conditional land use. In. I one, two, three, or IRP. So since there is no existing pole, structure, whatever. So since there is no existing pole, structure, or whatever, we're, we're we're focusing in on a condition land use somewhere.
So it, so the ordinance goes on to say that if you can't find a suitable location in an industrially zoned district, then you can locate on other appropriate, um, zone properties like ag or, um, government sites, things like that. So that's part of the additional information that we requested. That wasn't part of, of the initial submittal. We needed some rationale about this particular site since it's zoned A1. And we wanted additional information regarding the coverage and all of the other sites that they clearly did their research on to show that, that, you know, those other sites zoned industrial or with other existing structures weren't, weren't, um, weren't feasible for this particular look, this particular, um, issue to, to solve the issue that they have.
Um, okay, and I'm looking on page three of your memo. Um, the third bullet point that you made about, um, the color of this, but the color of the structure, but more importantly, at the bottom of that particular paragraph where you start to talk about if lighting is required by the Federal Aviation Administration, Federal Communications Commission, Michigan Aeronautics Commission, or other governmental agencies unless otherwise required, it shall be red between sunset and sunrise, white between sunrise and sunset, and shall blink or flash at the longest permitted intervals. Um, do you have any concerns? I know, um, the presentation said that the nearest, um, home is about a thousand feet away if I'm.
Right. Yeah, there's also no light on this.
When you're talking about light at night.
But there's no light. They're not, they're not tall enough to be required to have lighting.
Two hundred foot is above AGLs requirement.
Basically, that's the rule of thumb and we're below that.
Okay, so
there are no.
This is, this is pretty much a moot issue. Thank you.
Okay, I think Commissioner Riser was, did you have something you wanted?
No, it just had to do with the, the, the road, but like, you know, like, I, is the road supposed to be gravel or asphalt?
A Class, a Class C road is gravel.
Okay, and I'm just, and I guess what I would, I guess that's not before, nor is it ever going to be before, that's the ZBA and that's, the fire department's going to want to know whether they can.
So that would be part of site plan.
Yep, okay, all right.
Did I freeze?
So I have another question. There's a reason that the, that the Class C requirement is in our ordinance. Do you know what that reason is?
Well, the Class C, I turn off my, my video, sorry, because I have an unstable connection, but, um, the Class C road standard may be something that came into effect after the other existing towers, um, were constructed. I don't know that, but that could be why the, um, existing towers, uh, driveways weren't built to the Class C standards. Um, there is a provision in the ordinance to allow for a variance for a Class C road. Um, but you know, the, it's really going to be up to the fire department, whether or not they feel that there's adequate access for them.
So do you, do you know why that's a requirement?
Well, it's a requirement for, it would be a requirement for all development at a minimum. They would have to have a Class C road to a development.
And can you glean anything? I mean, so, so one of the things I have a problem with as a commissioner is that things are done to try to help developers in, 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 in their projects that are counter to our existing ordinances. And that's why I asked the question, why is that, why is that requirement in there? I mean, there's a reason for it. We don't just have it there for no reason. There's a reason why we put that in there.
It's to ensure adequate access is provided for emergency vehicles. Um, and, and we will look at that during the site plan review process, which we're not at yet. We're at the conditional use.
I understand that, but we're already talking about it at this meeting. Can we get some leeway with that? So despite that, and, and, and I like your recommendation that we propose any decision on anything tonight because I feel like there's a, a chunk of information here. But, uh, thank you.
Commissioner.
Uh, Laura, um, the, there was, there's a little bit made here of how high they can build it. Uh, because it's limited, I now I heard it's limited by our ordinance and I see it is.
Yes.
Uh, but it, it, it has exceptions allowing additional height. Would that be if coverage was necessary, uh, to reach more area?
Bottoms out.
Yeah, not just my house.
No, I mean, no, right.
There's a lot of yellow and red that isn't reaching.
Like, what, what would two hundred feet get us by coverage exactly?
It'd get us lights.
But under what, under what reasons, what conditions would we consider having a higher tower, allowance to higher tower?
And would that be a planning commission? Does that, is that planning commission jurisdiction?
Well, since I didn't, I didn't, since they are, they are asking for the maximum height, I didn't look into that. So I can do that as part of our next, um, um, review, but I would assume that if, you know, they can provide additional coverage and that's something that's warranted at this location, then that's something that, um, whether it's the plan, whether it's written so the planning commission can allow that deviation, or whether that's something the ZBA could allow, um, that would be, that would, that would be considered by either board, just, I haven't, I haven't looked at the ordinance. I don't know which way that would go.
Okay. If you would.
Township board, I just read the meeting, uh, it's sole discretion. He says the way I read it.
Yeah, but which commission underneath the board makes the recommendation to the board? The board is the one that approves. We only recommend.
If it says the board and it only goes to the planning commission, it would be the planning commission makes that recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yes.
Laura, question. This is a sixty-four acre lot. This tower goes up on the lot. Can anything else be done on the sixty-four acres as a sole use?
There's nothing that requires that this be a sole use of property. So it could be developed in another fashion as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Laura?
For Laura, I'm sorry. No.
Okay. Okay, OHM.
Good evening. Um, we didn't recommend, uh, these plans as presented in our letter from August twenty-seventh. However, most of, not even most, all of our comments that we provided are site plan related. We generally would comment on those during that plan review, but provided them now for a change. And I believe that they're all fairly minor and can be easily addressed, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about them.
Uh, just, I noticed that, um, in your report, it called it a nine, hundred and ninety-foot tower.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, that I'm not sure where the one ninety came from, but I believe it's a mistake.
Go to where I got it to. Okay. All right, any questions for OHM?
Just one quick question. What's the shall provide a minimum of two benchmarks on the plan? Item number eleven?
Yeah, that's just a general requirement for any site plan. Um, we want to see the two benchmarks shown so that during construction, we know where they're located.
Oh. Thank you. We, other questions? Then we'll go ahead and open, uh, it up to the public. Is there anyone, um, present in township hall that would like to comment on the cell tower? All right. Go to hotline. A little, a little bit, and please do raise your hand. And just a test, will someone raise their hand if they can hear me? Okay, great, thank you. Right.
Dan, I did, uh, you moved on so quickly.
Oh, you wanted to.
I do.
Okay, come on up, no problem.
My question is about the construction period.
Uh, just a second.
Oh, Judy Monk, thank you, resident.
And do sign in under the, um, you don't have to do that now.
I'll do it afterwards.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
My question is about the construction period. Um, if I could get it just to feel for what the construction equipment would be and what the impact would be on that road. The road that we're referencing, um, what size equipment, how long does it take, how that's approached?
So that road, as I understand it, we will confirm it, but it's my understanding that the sand was hauled out of there by gravel trains. And so that road was, is a pretty significant road to handle gravel trains hauling, uh, materials out of there. And I will confirm that with Dr. Maxi, but that's my understanding from talking to him before. So as far as the road goes, pretty substantial road. There's a few spots that we would fill in, but pretty, pretty substantial road. Typical construction is, uh, sixty days from start to finish. Um, we will do a, uh, foundation. Takes about twenty-eight days to get the PSI that we need as far as the, uh, concrete, uh, curing. Um, it's typically, we're looking at typically fifty-four PSI or fifty-four hundred PSI on that. Um, once that is, once that foundation is in, then we can start stacking the tower and things of that nature. And I've talked to my construction manager, uh, recently, and he typically tells me that it's about a, uh, a sixty-day window from the start to finish. So that gives you an idea as far as.
What kind of trucks are you using to?
So we'll bring in, so, yep, so we'll bring in a concrete truck for the concrete. We will bring in, um, a semi that will have the tower on it.
And it, again, in what, two pieces, three pieces?
No, there'll be twenty-foot sections, two, I'm going to call it two hundred feet, so there'll be ten sections.
Okay. And they're twenty feet long?
Twenty feet long, and that's typically.
And there's no turns that?
That it can't make.
That it can't make.
No, no, it's, uh, as I said earlier, um, the gravel trains haul them out, how, haul materials out of there. So it's going to be the same size as the gravel, not shorter. Um, and then, um, the, uh, they'll bring in a crane to lift it because they'll stack the tower. It, it actually goes up, the base will go on, then they stack another tower, another section, that twenty-foot section on top of that, and then another twenty-foot section on top of that.
Okay, so if you don't get it, I know. I, I, I just have to, you know.
I don't know.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just very curious about impact on people for this construction.
Yeah, and if, if you, if you want to, go ahead and, you, you're okay? Because, yeah, typically it's to the, to the planning commission chair. And then, yeah, and then we can ask additional questions, which doesn't help with dialogue sometimes, so.
One of the twenty-four agencies we have to get approved, pre-approvals, drive by Michigan roads with these, these twenty-foot sections of tower. We actually have to get a pre-approval, but actually drive it along and get it to the site. So.
So additionally, when you say the, the construction season, typically it's getting the concrete in, right? And then the tower can go in winter months, is that?
We don't like to build in the winter, but we will build in the winter. As long as the trucks can get in.
Without.
That's, yeah, that's, that's correct.
Don't you run into road restrictions?
In spring.
In the spring?
Yeah, depends on what kind of road we're going to go on.
Road restrictions, they're going to affect.
And that's why we, if we can build in the winter, we will, but otherwise we know there's that two window or that month and a half to two-month road restriction or load restriction on the, uh, on the roads.
In, in the spring.
In the spring, we count on it every year.
Okay, do we have anyone online? No. Thank you. Sorry, I missed you earlier.
It's okay. Sorry, I got a follow-up.
Okay, then I'll.
We close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, move to Riser, seconded April. Right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed.
We just don't have to take action. We don't need a motion.
Correct. Need a motion too. You need a motion table?
I don't know if we need a motion to postpone it or to lay it on the table, or if we just don't take any action. I defer to Laura on this, but parliamentary, parliamentally.
Yeah, we don't have to take action, is that?
You, you don't have to take action, but since it's a new business item, I would postpone until the next meeting so that we have time to review the new materials. That way it'll come up as unfinished business on your next agenda.
We're free to change anyways, but I'll move to postpone it to our, um, October meeting, October seventh?
Laura's suggesting table.
Well, that's postponed.
The correct terminology is postpone it to a date certain.
Right, okay.
And, and is it, we're postponing the public hearing or we're finished?
That's done.
That's done.
We've got that out of the way.
So we, we're moving, we're postponing the second part that's under new business.
The new business portion.
Any consideration of it?
Okay, is there a, there support, support from Commissioner Walsh? Further discussion? Right, uh, we'll call vote, please.
Hyde, yes. April.
S.
Riser, yes. Walsh, yes. Moore.
Yes.
Coberson.
Yes.
Motion to postpone until October seventh. So, carry.
At, at that point in time, you'll be, yeah, unfinished business and people will still be able to comment in our open public comment sessions. So, and thank you for, um, including that additional material. And even though, you know, we, uh, our consultant needs to review it, but I think that was helpful. Because it's. Well, it should be the fourteenth, I believe. Just, our, our. Yes. Commissioner Walsh has one additional comment.
Mr. Hyde.
The height. I'm never going to get that right. I should just say Bob, which I'm Bob.
What I was getting at, if, if you could address when we reconvene on this, what an additional height would do to the yellow and red areas that are not covered, that surround this tower? Just considering that you're down about, oh, I think it was, you're about fifty feet lower than some of the areas that surround it, yeah, because you're already down, going down towards the rim.
So I will, uh, we'll talk to engineering about that. Uh, I'd already planned on doing that to see what they could tell me. We really don't want to go above that two-hundred-foot level if we don't have to.
The lighting and FAA stuff?
Lighting FAA, exactly.
I get it.
Um, but if we can stay, so typically what we would do, um, Austin, we're, we're on this one as far as, um, center line.
Once.
Thirty-five, I thought.
Once. One seventy-five.
Yeah.
One seventy-five. So you gotta be one foot below the top of the, uh, pole, so be four feet, uh, or eight-foot antennas typically, so that center line at one seventy-five, four feet, that would be one seventy-nine, so. Yeah, one seventy-five.
So we would check to see how high we can go and stay within the, um, two-hundred-foot.
That window.
That window, yep.
Does that include your lightning rod?
Yes.
Link can sit that too.
Yep, yep. Typically, when we go up to one ninety-five, we will do a four-foot lightning rod. And, and, uh, so that keeps us under that two-hundred-foot level. Um, the other thing we will do is to see what we can do if we did have to go over two-hundred feet.
Right.
And see if RF will give us something that makes sense, uh, to do that. If it makes any difference, yeah, getting towards your place.
Right. Getting towards the. I just don't want to leave islands.
No, I, no, I, I have.
There won't be any island.
So if we can, if we can, no, I, I.
Yeah, it's an island problem.
I fully understand what you're saying and I, I'll see what we can do.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Confirm that October seventh, even though it's the first Monday, we moved it because of the holiday, so.
Oh, great, that's even better.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Where'd you come in from?
Oh, just from Bologna in my case, so it's not that far.
As always, okay, moving on to our second public hearing, which is. Conditional use number twenty-four zero zero eight, the Blue Zone Hoops Indoor Basketball Facility. And I will open our public hearing at eight thirty, and we'll begin with the applicants. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Christopher Hunter. I'm here representing Big Game Hunter Basketball and for the application for MGD Holdings. Which owns the industrial building that I'm looking to get conditional use for it. Seven one eight five. So for me, hopefully this is a little bit more straightforward. Than the last conversation, but.
A little less technical.
Yeah, a little, little less technical, so I'm sure you guys kinda seen the packet. And the narrative that was put place. And I just, you know, received the, the review from Carlisle Warman over the end of last week. So hadn't had time to officially address some of those concerns in there. As far as getting engineer plans for the site plan, being in over the weekend and this quick turnaround here. But I just wanted to talk about my project a little bit, as far as what the, the business and the use of the space would be. I am, I am a former Michigan basketball player and, you know, played professionally for a number of years. And been back with the program and been back on the coaching staff in Michigan basketball for the last decade now. And I've been running our youth camps and et cetera for the past decade. So trying to bring another consistent access to, to not only youth basketball players. But, you know, basketball enthusiasts in the Ann Arbor area, Sayo Township area. And, you know, this west Ann Arbor area was a good area that kinda hasn't been tapped into as far as that type of access. And ability for folks to come in and use a, you know, basketball facility and get consistent access and training to it. So, you know, kind of a passion project for me to be able to have something available for, for youth to train. Youth to get better, youth to be exposed to all of the things that basketball can bring to you as far as teamwork, effort, all of those things. So in search for a space with the ceiling height that is required for indoor basketball. Came across this particular site and was trying to move forward and trying to get the conditional use for it. So. So the basis of the business would be more of a, a membership style model. Where folks can get individual access to various shooting zones. And these shooting zones will be equipped with automatic rebounding machines. That, you know, a mom or dad can bring their son in, and you can get, you know, two hundred to three hundred shots up in a thirty to one hour period. And kind of maximize.
I just couldn't wait.
Excuse me?
You said a father could bring his son, could a father bring his daughter?
Every, any basketball enthusiast, that was just the initial example. Well, for sure, basketball, I have daughters that I hope, my daughter, I hope plays as well. But yeah, so any, you know, your child or anybody who come in, so girl or boy. And can come in and use the facility and have access to it. So trying to solve a, a problem and issue of just having that consistent individualized access to basketball training. Instead of trying to go up to your local Y or rec center and going in and you see, you know, old men or whoever playing, and you can't get time on the court. My business wants to solve that problem, have a solution where you can book your time in advance. And know I have this specific, this specific zone of court to be able to work. And get, get my shots up and, and play basketball. In addition to that, you know, want to offer some curated and consistent kind of basketball training for different levels, whether you're a beginner. Whether you play a little bit, or you're a little bit more expert, where you're trying to, hey, I'm trying to make my middle school basketball team. Or I'm trying to just get better at basketball, or fans trying to introduce their son or daughter to the game of basketball. And get them into some type of physical activity within a group. So offering that consistent, you know, kind of courses and classes that people are, can sign up for and kind of have access to. Is the model for my business. Wanted to address, I think, a few of the. Issues. And some of the concerns that came up from the fact finding and recommendations. I think first and foremost was the noise concern as it pertains to the residential development. To the west of the property. For me, everything will be contained inside the building. So as far as noise is, you know, it's, it's, it's ball bouncing, it's, you know, that, that sort of thing. And maybe some light music being played inside the facility, but everything would be contained inside of the building. So, you know, no more noise than would be somebody going in, playing basketball, the ball's bouncing around in it. Secondarily, I think the other major concern was the, the traffic and the parking constraints. Which was also a concern of mine, something that is very duly noted. So like I stated earlier, just getting this and talking to Doug over at Carlisle Warman on Friday. Haven't had the ability to get like really engineered plans and get on any, any engineering companies kind of. Scheduled to be able to provide that. The, the flow of parking and the actual amount of kind of square footage of pavement and all of that stuff, yeah. So that's something that we'll still need to continue to address moving forward. To hopefully. Have this conditional use approved. But from there, actually, not too many external things to be done to it. The interior would be simply for us putting down some, some sport court. Over the already existing concrete there. It'll be a rubber overlayment and sport court, and then putting down the requisite hoops and those sort of things. And then getting up to code on anything we need to do as far as the fire code, exit signs, safety. AED, all of that. The necessary things to be able to have a recreational use in there and have folks coming in and out of here. On a regular basis. The other thing that I wanted to clarify was the special classes, clinics and events. That may push attendance over the noted kind of normal use of, you know, fifteen participants from a hour to hour basis. That would be using that. I would like to offer on special occasions, maybe weekends and weeknights, special classes and clinics and leagues. When you're talking about a three-on-three league for kids at various ages, where you may have, you know. Maybe thirty to forty-five to maybe fifty folks in there at a time, including participants and spectators. Also on the weekends, have some adult men's five-on-five leagues, as well as youth five-on-five leagues. That will push that capacity, you know, upwards of forty to fifty people as well. So understanding that the findings here and the concerns about the traffic and the parking. Is also a concern of, of mine to be able to have the folks have places to park and enter and exit the building. Safely and efficiently. So that's just to clarify what those kind of special clinics and classes. And then also in the summer, to be able to hold some camps and clinics for, for kids and youth. Over those summer months where, you know, folks are looking for camps and clinics. So that could also push that normal operating capacity upwards of, you know, twenty to thirty-five folks in there as well. To make the, the business aspect of all of that work. So just clarifying that, and we really wanna kind of open it up to any additional clarifying questions from board. And go forward from there.
I mean, I have a question, and I'm not, do you have plans to have, to sell food, a kitchen? Or alcoholic beverages? Because I know that the pickleball, they, they have the, they have the, the wall of the beer there. And I know that the golf thing has beer there, and I'm not saying, oh, you gotta have beer. I'm saying, is that something that you might think about in the future, and you'll be coming back for that anyway? So, or if it's just for kids, I would think not, but if there's adult pickup leagues or adult leagues at night. Then that might be something that you'll be coming back to us in the future for. So is there any, given any thought to that? I'm just asking, I'm not promoting.
Yeah, no, the only, the real thought that I had was having vending machines, not to sell alcoholic beverages. But to sell, you know, some isotonic beverages, whether it be Gatorade or Powerade or something like that, waters and such. So didn't have any initial plans for any kind of greater things with alcohol or, or greater serving beverages and things. Like anything that could fit in the vending machine, and somebody can grab and take out and eat, and discard of was my plan moving forward.
No kitchen or no concession at this juncture?
No concession at this juncture.
Do you plan to have, I guess, locker rooms, restrooms, how, how do you, is it just that?
Yeah, so right now there is one existing restroom. Locker rooms, no. I would have kind of cubbies and cubicles where people can drop their stuff off. But this would be more of a kind of individual self-serve, you come in, you have a place, especially in the wintertime, to flip coat, boots, hats, hang it up. Get your workout gear and apparel on, use your specific zone or attend your specific class. And then you're kind of grabbing your stuff and you're exiting the building. So no real locker room or changing or use for folks to have any type of showers, anything like that. So restrooms, cubbies to hold your, your specific things you're coming, coming in with, that you're not gonna actually train or do physical activity with. And then you retrieve those and.
You're gonna have one restroom for everybody?
The, the code will.
Yes, so the code.
Tell him what he needs, which.
Take a number.
Which, yeah. Which brings up the issue of if this is a warehouse. We do need to check the allocated REUs and whether or not there need to be additional ones allocated and.
Can you explain what an REU is? It's the amount of water and sewer.
Demand on the system.
Yeah.
Yeah, which you, you're not gonna be in big demand, but it may be more than what's allocated currently.
Yes.
For that site. And, and that will require you to figure out how many restrooms and drinking fountain and all that sort of stuff. With the code.
That's in all my gym's notes. I think I'm hearing that you're gonna have people come in and get hot and sweaty. And put on their coat and go back out sweaty into their car. You're not gonna even allow them to change clothes?
Well, I mean, at, at this juncture, yes, that would be the. That's, that's the, that's the plan right now. Yep.
And we don't have any sale over.
But I don't think, I think Wolverine, Pickleball's the same way.
I haven't been inside there yet.
I have.
Yeah, they just have normal restrooms, no locker.
I don't shower at the gym. I might go home and do that, I put my sweats on and I.
So let, let me ask you this question, thanks, as you brought up parking. I've been reading over the documents that were submitted, I guess, what's your max, max number of people you would estimate at an event?
Including, so there's employees and then there are the.
Yeah, there's all employees and, you know, participants and spectators. Yeah, so particularly, I, I would say a max number of folks would probably be around sixty-five people. And that would include three to four employees, that would include, you know, thirty-five to forty kids. And probably another, you know, twenty or so folks who are either dropping kids off or staying and, you know, see it. Or, and, and spectate those events.
That's more than sixty-five people. So sixty-five, max sixty-five participants. Another forty or so spectators.
No, I said, I said probably around three or four employees, probably thirty-five to forty participants. Kids, many youth or whoever is involved in that. Then I said another probably about twenty spectators of folks who are either dropping kids off or staying too, so.
Just out of curiosity, I did see Mr. Lillard's letter that he submitted as support of you. There is overflow parking that's identified, but that site only looks like it has approximately five parking spots. So it helps, but not a whole lot. And I do know that you have a bunch of parking on your site. You've talked to him, and I don't know what. This is, but just as a thought, if thirteen L's drive a lot, I don't know, I'll throw that out, there's a question.
Yeah, I think parking is the big. undefined issue here.
Yes. It reminds me of the first iteration of Wolverine Pickleball. Where they parked along that road, which is a public road, which is allowed, you know, I think it's a public road, yeah. You know, you hear a lot of lovely park on the shoulder of the road, and people did that. So. Is this a public road?
That would be. If OHM can answer that.
Or Laura knows that that's a public road, I guess I could.
I don't believe, I don't believe that it is, because this address is, is Jackson Road. So I think three L's is some sort of private shared drive, it's not a private road. Or a public road.
Oh, Mr. Lillard, he's the owner of Volco Happenies.
Yeah, do you have a, a question?
Question on noise. I'm assuming basketball league is probably not terribly different from an adult hockey league. And that the participants will gather in the parking lot afterwards and enjoy a beverage of their choice and something else and make noise. I'm just wondering, given the area. Have you taken into account that you'll probably have, not just from a parking, but from a noise perspective, people post activity remaining on site?
Yes, I took that into consideration, and typically, these basketball leagues will, will happen around. After kind of our normal weekend business hours, which would typically be around from about noon to five. So if we're doing something, it will be in that five to kind of eight PM range that we'll be doing leagues. So, you know, well in the kind of scope of, you know, someone being outside and making noise, and it's not really disrupting. You know, kind of people's sleep and all of that stuff, if, if it's, I know that.
Realize it's residential.
Yeah, I know it's residential, right? Yes. Yeah, the, the new Woodview is right there, so, but I wouldn't anticipate that being a huge issue or something, yeah, definitely to consider.
Could we condition the conditional use?
Because typically conditional uses have hours and occupancy and all those things.
But the way she thinks about it, wanting to put a little shelter out there, just for the people to hang out after eight, you know, I mean, we've had that problem too. So we can talk about that.
Yeah, so if we don't have any other questions, that they have, that we should move to. So go ahead, Laura, please.
Sure, so as I think Chris said, this is seventy-one eighty-five Jackson Road. It is about two point nine seven acres. It includes three separate industrial buildings. That he would be locating in one of them, about ten thousand square feet of space for his basketball court facility. As he's noted, we don't have any real issues with the indoor basketball facility at this location. With the exception of, he addressed the noise, I think, pretty well. He indicated all of his use will be within the, the building. But our main concerns were traffic and parking, as, as Chris said. So we, just like the last applicant, we would recommend finishing the conditional use public hearing. And then tabling or postponing this, postponing action on this item. Until we can receive additional information specifically on traffic and parking. To make sure that the site is, is, can adequately serve his business.
So.
So have you thought about, may I ask a question?
Or.
Have you thought about the consequences of adults and teenagers using this facility um and hanging out outside?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have that with any business, um, you know, and and the, it appears to me that the building, um, the way it's situated in the parking is on the opposite side of where the resident, you know, the residential's to the west. The parking and associated um entry, I believe, of the facility is not adjacent, directly adjacent to the residential area. Um, and I mean, that's an operational thing that Chris can handle. And I mean, he can, he can say no loitering after, you know, I mean, there there are ways a business can can um ensure that that type of thing doesn't become a problem, right? If if um, you know, you can't drop your kid off if you're not gonna be there in time to to pick them up, th- those types of things, right?
But we could also make it a condition. We can create conditions that go along with the conditionings, right?
You can.
Yeah, and I I do think, Laura, we've done some things where everyone has to be off off-site by a certain time as well.
Yep.
Probably midnight.
Why do it then? All right, um. O H M.
We recommended these plans for approval in our letter from August twenty-sixth. We had one outstanding comment that the applicant would need to calculate the number of REUs, which I know has been mentioned tonight. I was not able to locate any records for this property, so I don't believe it has any existing REUs. Um, I don't anticipate it being a high sewer user, though. The previous similar projects that we've seen with the pickleball court and even the recent tennis court is one REU. So they may be a couple REUs. I'm not sure how many courts are being proposed. But since the REUs will need to be requested from the board, I believe that they could figure those out between now and then. Like Laura said, that there's some more information that she's looking for as well, so that could be when we review the REUs also. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. But this one was pretty straightforward review for us.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to say that I'm really excited about having some entertainment activity for our youngsters um in particular, so. I'm not against your project, but I want to make sure it doesn't get unruly.
Okay. We're still in our public hearing, so um we'll move to anyone.
In the house.
That is attend in attendance here. Okay. All right, then we'll move on lines. Okay. Then move up. All right, call up.
I'm unmuted, I believe. Um, I'm just curious, and Miss Moore, I've been watching you on the with the bus and trying to get the budget, and I really think that's a great thing. And I was just wondering, I don't take the bus that often, but I had, you know, my youngest is thirty-one. But i- it's nice when young people can get somewhere on a bus uh without their parents having to drive them and pick them up, especially if you're working. Uh, that's just something I thought about. I didn't know, I know there, it's a work in the process about where uh the bus stop, if the bus, you know, financially, how how the situation works with the bus. But anyway, that's just, I I love entertainment and I think that's a great thing, too. Thank you.
Cue cue.
Well, that is a good point. Does the uh, does A-Ride or A A A T A go out to uh?
It's supposed to have a stop right in front of Wood Tree, right by me.
Wave goes out there past.
I mean, that that's a, to her point, if people take the bus here, then that's less parking down the heat and, you know.
It is, I mean, Wave is available.
Still about nine, you know.
Still about nine.
Our line. So right now, the the thing falls into place.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Oh, and uh we'll give it to Hyde, you raised it to the other person, all right? All right, uh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed at eight fifty-five. Okay, then um we're in our uh under uh possible action on. We don't.
Follow Laura's suggestion. My understanding is we have to postpone to a specific date.
Or, I'm sorry, if I could, if I could interject, or um until you could postpone until additional information as required is provided. And so we're not, we're not putting this on an agenda where we're not sure we're gonna have information to act on.
I move to postpone this uh agenda item to the time where we where the planning commissioner receives additional information.
On?
On the part, it's primarily the parking.
I think four things.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, parking, circulation and pedestrian traffic between the parking and the building, I mean, that was all one group of things.
And site circulation, basically.
Yeah, site circulation. Tr- any traffic impacts that you can address? And REUs you utilize or expected to be utilized.
Laura, you're not gonna bring it back before it's ready, right? Obviously.
No, I will not bring it back before it's ready.
Yeah, so I'm confident that.
I will accept that from.
Friendly amendment, okay, great. So and that was, so site parking and site circulation, traffic impacts, that isn't a we're not asking for a traffic impact study, just understanding the or not the traffic implementation.
Flow and anticipated demand.
And expected REUs, unless you have, because the traffic impact statement is a relatively expensive this speci- specific study that wouldn't necessarily be required.
Well, what would we be requiring? I mean, he's already, he's okay, sixty-five. People tiny, sixty-five cars, I mean, what's he gonna come back here?
Well, I I think an idea, I mean, there's things that you can do, uh, and so I don't know what the other uses are on that site. And if the other businesses aren't active on weekends and you're going to just have the conditional use can say, you can have, you know, up to X number of people, you know, on Yeah, or uh specific days or holidays. And then you have a an agreement that allows you access to the rest of the parking and then normal business hours, we have so many employees, so many participants. And those are, and then the hours, because the hours are really important to a conditional use, so, yes.
Laura and I guess, uh, fellow commissioners, if there are adjacent parcels that aren't, that have sufficient parking, that aren't being used on evenings or weekends, might he be able to get in agreement with adjacent property owners, you know, industrial property owners to to use, to use their parking?
Absolutely.
That's what they're saying.
And how is the uh, the uh attending, attending, no, the the person who's coming to use the facility to get from this parking lot to the building safely if there's traffic that they have to cross, you know, internal flow of the traffic.
Those concerns, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was that one.
Yeah, and and actually knowing how many parking spaces there are, you know, available.
I would presume that we would want to know, we want to see the agreement before we approve. Or I guess you could have a condition.
Yeah, a condition and then.
So does this have to go to the B O T?
Yes.
Yes.
So that it it could happen.
So I'm motion on the floor.
Yes.
The board.
Right. All right, any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor of tabling it until we get the additional, postponing it until we get the additional information? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And well, thank you, and you can even also work with Laura to give the specifics of of what's. Okay, thank you very much. And yes, it is a definitely a great idea, so thank you for thinking of S I O.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, hey, moving to our uh new business, uh, item number eight three, uh, site plan number twenty-four zero one zero towns at Honey Creek. Probably too much.
All right, good evening.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Um, it's good to be back. We were here in June uh for a conditional use approval for the towns uh at Honey Creek and um we're here now for our site plan, uh, next step in the process. We actually, I don't know if I can get promoted here, we had a couple slides we could share just as a refresher course, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, if you could promote who.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew Bush with that one. Uh, while this is logging in, we've got uh David Strab here with uh M I Holmes as developer and advocate, and I also got my colleague Kyler Sharon. At that one, engineer. Uh, I'll keep this very brief in interest of time and also fact you've seen this um proposal before, but uh again, just um reminder of the location here.
East of Menards.
Yeah, East of Menards, everyone knows where it is, um, land split for the uh outlot. East of Menards, we keep moving. You guys uh recommended approval and the board approved us in July for the conditional use. Um, nothing is changed, which regarded the use center proposals, still sixty uh attached multifamily uh residential townhomes. Um, and just kind of marching along here, the site plan looks relatively big, high level, the same. Um, we have all of our infiltration rain gardens, infiltration basins, uh, we have addressed um, most of the comments with drain offs, still working through some final details, uh, which will happen during the engineering plans. Uh, working with consultants to address their comments. Um, we're pretty close there. Laura can speak for herself and uh Stacy can speak for herself, but uh but I feel we're pretty close to uh addressing all of those concerns that are remaining or minor. Um, one thing you will see on this uh blow up here that you didn't see uh last time was the sidewalks uh throughout the internal site, throughout the site, we added those um per verbal request to do so, and then we also designated an area for a pocket park about thirty feet wide by ninety feet um at the end of the cul-de-sac there. Um, you know, everything else, good transitional use, there's great buffers to the south. We are, which you don't see on this exhibit, but you do see on the landscape plan, a dense row of uh conifers along the north end there as another screen buffer, so. Um, like I said, we made some revisions to the plans to address the comments. And then um similar housing elevations you see in the packet, just uh throwing this up here again, just for visual reference.
It's a pocket park.
Uh, basically just an area for recreational use, designated for recreational use, it's usually smaller. It's a turn.
Can you talk a little bit more about what that is and show us on the site plan?
Yeah, sure. So what that is, is really just a grassed area um at in between the uh rain garden and infiltration basin at the end of the cul-de-sac. So we extended sidewalk onto the grassed area there. Um, people can access it and just use it for recreational use. Uh, tight, the site is um pretty tight there, but uh we feel at least that's some green space. There's also a lot of open space on the site. We can't necessarily consider that for, and it's active open space, but there's a ton of open space on there because it's in the floodplain. Um, but that's the area we're designating as a little tiny.
In there, right?
Correct. Is it possible to zoom in on that area and measure cursor?
Probably is, um.
I didn't see anything labeled that way.
Yeah, it's it's up here with uh, in this area right here.
Oh, you do have a label.
Where are you pointing? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's actually includes that whole, the red just kind of is to zone your eye into it, but it's this whole grass space up here is the is the um designated recreation.
How, how, what's that approximate size?
Uh, approximate size is about twenty-seven hundred uh square feet, it's about thirty feet by ninety.
Okay, thirty by ninety.
From property line to edge of uh walkway and then probably.
Like catch or frisbee or.
Yeah, I had another question too. It looks like you have either decks or patios out, the they have sliding glass doors and so forth. Are there, eh, but the elevations don't, eh, at least I couldn't see that they have any privacy separation at all? I'm just thinking about pri- you know, private outdoor space too for the townhomes.
We don't include privacy separation between those, uh, you know, the our our neighbors tend to uh tend to get along and they know when they're buying in a multifamily attached community that their uh, that their neighbors will be close. So we don't, we don't have any issues with uh with neighbors invading each other's space.
I don't know, I wouldn't.
I I will share, there's another product just down the street from you that's a Red Bull community that bill privacy dividers on all of their outdoor spaces.
I I don't, yeah, I mean, just. Yeah, feedback would be, it would be nice to have, you know, because you can also use the walls, you know, for if you people can do planters or whatever, and it's just a, um, you know, it's not.
Personalizing.
Yeah.
I guess another concern that if I'm looking at the units on the south side and they're gonna have outdoor walkout patios, I was thinking about children and a giant detention picture. Having any concerns about that thought?
Well, ta- I guess talk about. Yeah, what the, I mean, there's, you know, topography, eh, uh, the infiltration, you wanna just talk, kind of talk about the expectations around that?
Sure, yeah, um, as far as concerned, children in the basin, I mean, it's designed per the county standard, so it's one on five slopes, so it's recoverable slopes. So we're not doing anything out of the ordinary that's required. Eh, any other development, you have a basin next to a house. Um, so, you know, someone can, in theory, walk out of the basin, but it's also an infiltration basin, so after a rain event, it'll drain dry after, what, seventy-two hours or so? Most of the time it'll be dry anyways. Um, and then the topography for the rest of the site is pretty flat. I mean, the floodplain to the south there, we're staying out of it. And goes, you know, when you get to Honey Creek, there's the creek there, but before that, it's kind of flat and wooded and so nothing substantial um in that, in those areas. Otherwise, the rain gardens are like they're a small rain garden that you might have seen or used sort of brochures from the city, but it's uh just eight inches to a foot deep and they're planted and barely tell they're there as far as topography, so.
And any other clarifying questions?
Is this, we're gonna be coming back to this.
We'll move on to Carlisle Wortman.
So as I think Matt mentioned, this uh property is, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm having. Okay, so I think as um Matt mentioned, this is a conditional use that was approved by the township board on July ninth earlier this year. So you saw this um conceptually um as a conditional use. Uh, it remains the sixty townhome development that you um recommended approval for on eleven point oh seven acres. The zoning is C two general commercial and it is also part of the Jackson Road o- um overlay district. Um, we noted ten mi- what we feel are minor items um that can be addressed prior to um detail engineering approval by the township board. Um, some of these Matt mentioned, um, they they have said that they're gonna do the land division can reconfiguration as part of um, as part of this process. Um, we are requesting that they install tree protection fencing prior to the issue. Um we are requesting that they install tree protection fencing prior to the issuance of zoning compliance permit. Um that's pretty typical for some of these developments to ensure that the qua- the um existing trees are um. Protected during construction, um we're gonna also recommend that as a condition of site plan approval. Um we need some documentation that verifies the long term use and maintenance of the access drive through the Menards property to ensure that this uh site has safe access. Um and I believe the fire department has already approved access. Um we also recommend that um eighty percent opacity between the developments is confirmed, um and that's through the landscaping. Prior to issuance of any final zoning compliance certificates for the project. Uh we also would like them to show the location of all replacement trees separately. From any other required landscaping to ensure that replacement trees are in addition to the required plantings as required by our ordinance. Uh we also would like to see the lighting locations, light types and photometric cut sheets. Um we recommended wrapping the brick ledge around the rear of the proposed buildings just as an aesthetic. Um and it provide the floor plans. And um lastly, uh address the provision of a resident amenity as requested by the planning commission, and it sounds like they've done so through the pocket park. And I'm happy to answer any questions on our review.
Questions for, oh yes.
Laura, did you, are you saying that for? Uh it goes on the agenda for our site plan consideration, which I believe this one is. We, those ten items need to be addressed?
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying for detail engineering, which is what it what the next step is at township board. I think our report, our report doesn't say that, but that's what we're saying tonight.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions, Laura? Okay, O H M.
We also recommended approval of the plans in our letter from August thirtieth. We had two outstanding utility related comments that are fairly minor, and I believe that they're actually already being worked on by the applicant. So they've got a leg up there. And it is anticipated that this project will need sixty R U's, there is not any allocated to this parcel as part of the Menards development. Um so those, those would me- need to be requested uh once they go to the board. But other than that, um I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So I do wanna hit the talk, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying, so. Menards is saying all their R U's are theirs.
Correct. That's just this kind of process that Menards. Knew what their capacity was, but they didn't know how the outlots would be developed. The same happened with Meyer and probably Lowe's too.
Do you know how much the, how many R U's Menards has?
I don't know offhand.
Okay. And so what? How does that work? The applicant has to apply to the township for these. Sixty R U's?
Yeah, it'll be just like any other project, they just request them from the township board for their property specifically.
And um. I know this is a moving target, many, many moons ago. You got, you said there was about twelve hundred R U's, we've had meetings at the. Well, Jackson Road Advisory Group, we have continued meetings here at um planning commission. What's your best guess of our uh the number of R U's we have right now?
Honestly, I'm not prepared to answer that question, I don't even wanna guess.
So, okay, let me, let me ask this then. You have recommending. That, I'm sorry, you're saying that this project needs sixty R U's, right?
Correct.
Okay. And how do you know that we have sixty R U's to cover this project? Not, I don't mean, I, Stacy, I don't.
Put me on the spot.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 I don't mean to do that, when I say you, I mean. O M H.
O H M.
I got a problem with that, O H M, or not you specifically, but.
I understand your concerns, um we. It might not be the answer you're looking for, we just know that we haven't quite hit that twelve hundred yet. All the R U's recently that we've approved or recommended to for approval have been fairly low. Once we get another large development like a Woodview Commons or equivalent, then. That's when we'll be more conscientious of the number that's actually remaining and.
Oh, you guys are getting conscientious on that, okay? Well, that's a, I've heard that response before, that's good to know, good to know.
I just wanna add, we have started to um. Go back the past few years, how many R U's we've been approving, I don't know that number offhand, I'll put that out there now. But we are looking into that more as this concern becomes more of a problem with the township.
Well, it's a problem, that's why you have me bringing it up all the time.
I know, we appreciate it.
In a lot of planning meetings, so, because we don't have a hard, no, we don't have. Or let me just say this, I don't believe we have. A usable, accurate estimation of what the R U's out there outstanding, but when you say you recommend the sixty. R U's or you believe there's sufficient for the sixty R U's, um. Is that taking into consideration the crossroads pro- crossroads project at Wood Wagner and uh Liberty?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
I could also answer your question a little bit, there was a meeting between water sewer director. Myself, Julian, Matt Parks, and some other people. I could, I could talk to you more about that in your next.
Care to share, I mean, because we're picking decisions.
My laptop will be charged then, I can, I can read you the email verbatim and after we finish with that, if that's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a question?
I would just say that my issue is, is that. There's side meetings and conversations, which is fine to be able to flush things out, but the planning commission is constantly dealing with this issue of R U, so. To the extent that you can share information with the planning commission, it's not just satisfying Kim Moore.
Oh, hundred percent, one hundred and ten percent, I'd be happy to share. Matt, I have a question for you, uh about your projects that are used, uh are these all gonna have individual water meters? Just out of curiosity.
Yes, I believe that the way that we, we were going back and forth with um. You know, your, your water sewer and uh yes, I think what we resolved was that we were gonna do individual use of individual stop.
I guess said you guys are gonna sell individual units, that makes the most sense.
These are all going to be owner occupied? Or no, are they just rentals? Uh these are all for sale, okay.
I guess that, that makes the most sense, huh? Do you have an idea roughly what market price is gonna be, out of curiosity?
Eh that, we're supposed to be asking questions.
Sorry, sorry, I'll.
I mean, we'll have our opportunity to deliberate after the public.
I'll come back to that question in a few minutes.
Okay, alright, um any other questions for O H M? Alright, then we'll open it up, oh no, we're not in public right now, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, um so go ahead, yeah, with your.
Why would I go back to my market price question, sure?
Your market price question?
So market price, uh in the low to mid four hundreds.
Okay. Okay.
Is, I, is this going to be a condominium association? Organized, organized, uh. And do we need to know the name of the? Organization, the c- the condominium association now?
Well, there'll be some documentation that has to go before the.
So.
That's the final.
I have questions, um.
Well, I wasn't done.
Yeah. Turn about the condo specs and environmental and all that.
Okay. And and where I was going was, I was trying to find who was, you know, how they were. How it was going to be maintained, and I'm talking about the rain gardens and the infiltration basins, and I see you do have a chart. But that was where I saw the header, the condominium association will be uh. Responsible for the maintaining of it. So that's who's going to be. Called, either they're going to have to inspect and report to somebody, or is this just? As they notice things, they're gonna take care of it, or how, how is that gonna be organized? Well, and and we, those tables and those maintenance schedules and all of that requirements, who maintains it is actually something we need to, is uh through the process of the county approvals for the stormwater, we need to put in place, so. Yes, and this is pretty typical, it will be the condominium association, and yes, per that table, they have to inspect it. Or, you know, in a certain frequency, hire someone to inspect it in order to. Look for these things that in the table, either annually or by whatever specified in that table, and then, yes, they'll have to fix it if something's noticed or there's issues.
Do we have to report back to the Water Resources Commission or or anybody in the?
Um I don't believe, I know that answer that question, but I don't think so, um but I don't, uh I obviously if there's a a question that gets brought up and the. County gets involved, then they'll make sure that there's documentation.
So just. Your edification, we have already existing developments that have H P A's.
Yeah.
And they're responsible for a lot of stuff, but they. People aren't paying attention to, the drains get. Plugged and they call the township, and so in terms of responsibility, we're not finding that people are on top of these things.
It works.
So there's a.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I can share from the developer's side since.
Please.
There's a maintenance schedule, there's recommendations of whom should be doing maintenance and when and what specific type of maintenance. Depending on if it's a rain garden, if it's a sanitary or uh infiltration basin. It is ultimately up to the property owner. I guess in this case to do said.
And nobody is looking on their controller to see that it's being done.
So, so for instance, um we get clock drains over in um. Pollen fields.
Mm-hmm.
And I would assume that the association of pollin fields is responsible for take, making that happen. So. I think what Commissioner Hyde is trying to point out that. Things can sit there and not be addressed for long periods of time. And then you have in that particular area, you've got a lot of uh drain issues going on in that particular area.
So I would refer, uh then go to Stacy. Is there any, is there a recommendation that you can make um to go into the condominium documents that? Would, would there be any reporting, would there be something that would um? Help ensure that the maintenance was carried out?
Yeah, that could be included in those documents, um this one, I was just looking at the plans again, we do have, like. Uh Commissioner Ryan mentioned the uh maintenance schedule, it does say the condo association will be first in line of responsibility, so. That's generally what we look for and require on these projects, um some projects you can do. A stormwater maintenance agreement. If that was determined to be necessary, um.
So I think especially with smaller um associations, it's sometimes harder. I don't know, how, how do we?
Sometimes slips through a little bit here.
Yeah, um especially if they don't have someone who is, is managing the association. So I guess. We can, it, it would be helpful if we could strengthen some of that in, in the uh agreements.
Before it goes to the board, or wait, does that have to after?
I think the condominium, that that agreement has to be completed and reviewed by the township attorney before a site plan approval, right? Is that correct?
Stacy?
Or Laura?
Typically, we don't, I, I mean, I don't have anything to do with the, the condo documents, um so that's a question I'd have to ask Mariah. I mean, to eh as far as zoning is concerned, we don't necessarily care if they're rented, you know, it's zoning, it's multifamily, I don't necessarily have. An opinion either way, whether it's for sale or for rent, so.
Um I have a, a couple of questions, and that has to do with um the, are you in intending to meet any of the um? Inflation Reduction Act, uh um. Tax credits, et cetera, for developers or for the uh condominium owners themselves to take advantage of. Of, of solar, the uh eh constructing to the Energy Star. Um standards that allow eh eh the contractor and or the homeowner to take advantage of some of those. Um rebates and tax credits.
And that um the mission. Shared in the first meeting that we were at that uh having some green initiatives would be uh uh a. Good course of action for those development. Yeah, yeah. Uh what we are had proposed is uh prep for solar and prep for uh. Car charging stations in each of the garages. Uh that doesn't provide the actual physical wiring for that, but it provides the means and methods for somebody to be able to, if they choose to. Install solar or if they do have an electric car to be able to provide the uh, you know, the. The pathway for connection for each of those.
Okay, there are, eh and I guess I would say you might wanna even meet the solar ready requirements for the new energy code that may go into effect. May, June of next year.
I know our uh our purchasing department is very well tuned in to uh new energy goal and uh. Making sure that we're gonna stay out of that.
Is that, eh yeah, because if you're gonna do those pathways and so forth, it would make sense to just go with the, the requirements of the solar ready. Um provisions in the.
We'll do that.
Okay. Because you have good orientation. Yes.
I have questions, can you pull up the um like a, a little overview of it, maybe the one that had the red pocket part? Could you, I don't know, could you uh go back to showing it, would that be possible? And I'm gonna ask you about a different kind of pathways, and that's literal pathways, connectivity to other neighborhoods, so there's um maybe. And if you can, so there's, for the south of you, that's, to the south of you, there's. There's trail woods and to the south and west of you, there's dirt way, and to the south of you, there's gonna be a really nice pathway along Park Road. And it's gonna be able to connect with Zeb Road, and there's also a nice park there at the Stabler, and 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 like. Are, are residents gonna be able to get out of here, is there gonna be any common area or pathways that's gonna take us? Over here to connect to other neighborhoods, or is this an island, uh this development intended to be, um you can't get there from here. It's gonna be a landmark, so to speak.
Well, there's, there's connectivity through the site that can bring you out to the walkways from Menards out to Jackson, or we're also maintaining the pedestrian connectivity that goes to the south, so you can. It's part of the, it's gray tone, because it's part of the aerial, but on the left hand side of the basin, yeah.
So this, this'll take, that, this'll, is this connectivity for, for your residents to get to the nice park we had down there and the nice. Pathway we're gonna have along there, and just, you know, these people are gonna wanna walk and get leisure, the members are gonna. Get tired of going back and forth, and they're gonna probably wanna walk through neighborhoods, so is that something that's anticipated?
We are maintaining the connectivity to the south that was previously planned there, that's uh, we're not. Interrupting that, and then we are connecting to the pathway that goes out to Jackson, but those are the only two.
So maintaining that connectivity that goes to the south, is that, is it, does it go to the Honey Creek, or is there a, is there, is there a, a bridge over there?
There appears to be a bridge over that, upper, upper property, but, yeah.
There's a bridge.
Okay.
And that was installed with the original development in Menards, I understand.
So could you go with a cursor, how? Folks from this development would access that?
Uh so folks from this development would access through along the road, the sidewalk along the road, and then they would. Connect into what the pathway Menards had uh and come down to the south, and they cross Honey Creek that way. Or they would go along to the pathway up Menards to Jackson's.
And, and they're not just gonna kind of walk through here and walk over there?
Well, they can only get so far before they run into the creek, so they may wander in the woods there, I guess, but if they want to. Well, they can only get so far before they run into the creek. So they may wander in the woods there, I guess, but if they wanted to, it's open space. But, um, I'd take the sidewalk, I guess.
Gotta get around the base.
Yeah.
No, no, okay. So, but, but there is connectivity to the south, to the neighborhood there and to the pathways there and to the park there. Okay. How about the, 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 um. Oftentimes, when there's a new condo association. You guys will prepare the rules for them. Uh, and, and then at some point, when there's a certain percentage that gets turned over to them, do you anticipate something like that? Like there's sixty-five and when they sell seventy-five or eighty percent, they turn it over. But in the interim, you guys run the condo association. Is that? Probably gonna be the case as well here?
That's correct. We follow, we follow, we follow the, uh, condo law on that and transition as we go.
Okay, because it's been a real pain in the ass. Below because the developer is the thing and then the plants, plants die because they don't get water. And so the having involved residents having some say, pain in the ass was the wrong thing to say. It's been inconvenient for some of the residents to the south because of that limitation. And I appreciate that's how it just has to be. Until you've got this sufficient body of folks living there that can kinda regulate themselves and collect monies and make decisions for them. For themselves as an association. But one, one of the. Often rules are no clotheslines and no solar. And we have a, we have a sustainability plan that. Legacy condo and homeowner associations often aren't forward-thinking in that regard. So, so I guess. Do you know if the typical association rules are gonna be no clotheslines? Or, uh, solar or no chickens? And I don't mean that literally, but I'm saying a lot of things that we might wanna have by way of sustainability are often prohibited. And then we just shrug our shoulders and say, well, we can't prohibit it. The condo's saying that. Jen, you know, I'm getting that with respect to. ES, the ESTF plan or, you know, our, our plan. So I'm, I guess I'm asking this board. If there are things that we should be thinking of that we might wanna make a condition that the initial HOA rules shall not prohibit clotheslines. Or the initial HOA rules shall not prohibit solar or the, you know, that, that's, that's kinda what I'm thinking about.
Chickens is pushing it a little.
Of course it is. That's reductio ad absurdum, as we say in our trade. But, 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 um.
Yeah, well, they can't, uh, they can't prohibit solar now by legislation, but.
Small solar, but, 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 but.
Yeah, no, they can't.
The homeowners can't prohibit it themselves?
The, the condo associations can't.
So, but are there other?
But I think we could make it that, um, that the association rules are consistent with the goals of the, um. The ESCAP plan. You know, the ESCAP.
Yeah.
We could put a, I don't know if we can condition it, but that, that would be the recommendation. The association roles be reviewed and they would be consistent with the, the ESCAP plan.
Who gets to review?
They wouldn't deal with.
That would be Mariah.
Pardon?
That wouldn't deal with clotheslines.
No, but, but, but I mean. In Ann Arbor, people complain because they can't have a clothesline because their condo won't let them.
Yeah, but that would be, it would be consistent with.
And that's less type of.
Which would be.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it reduces energy use as would solar ready and, yeah, and being able to have. The, the, um, install solar on. You know, your south facing, southeast, south west facing.
And I'm not suggesting chicken.
But I think if we did that, then Mariah could review it in that context.
But do you appreciate the standard we're, we're getting at or am I, am, am I scaring you? A little bit like because.
Yeah, we, we, we appreciate it and, uh, you know, you, you made your points perfectly clear the first time we were in front of you.
Oh, we're going over.
This initiative to the, uh, to the township. Talking about, um, you know, the HOA in transition to the homeowners, we actually. Uh, have created advisory boards. So before it starts transitioning over to the homeowners. We have advisory boards early and it's early to, you know, have engagement with homeowners. So there's no surprises either way when it comes time to actually start transitioning. We found that to be just a, you know, a good collaboration with homeowners in our, in our community. So we, you know, they've got a voice. Maybe not an official voice on the board of directors yet, but they start to have a voice early in the process.
So is there any grassy area that a individual condo owner will, will be responsible for or own or is it all common property?
That would all be maintained by the HOA.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I see mention, uh, refuse collection. In various areas. Is there recycling collections? It's not been mentioned. But it might be the best way, just a general term and you need both.
Sure, I think that, I think that. The idea was to include both, uh, uh, you know, I think I, and I don't know in the, in, in Scioto Township, but. In a lot of municipalities today, you receive two bins. One, one for trash and one for recycling.
You don't mention one and so that worried me.
And there wasn't any intention to.
So it's kinda the individual rather than.
Yeah, it's the cart.
Got bins.
It's all have garages.
Everybody will have their own that they'll be responsible for. It only says the word refuse, so I was. Or I only found that word.
Yes, looking at your T A C H offerings regarding your exterior of your buildings. The colors here, it says there's a, a midnight blue on the front. I didn't notice that.
That's the accent color. That's the shutters and front door. It's an accent color.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. The thing that's concerning me is just long-term accessibility. At the moment, Menards just has. Grass lots to the north. I'm assuming they have plans like Meyer did to develop those lots. And if you start to put in a trio or a quad of restaurants or something else. In each of those, you're gonna have a fair amount of traffic also using the same access road. I'm just wondering about the flow of traffic in a fully developed Menards. And you've got this sixty residents or residential units tucked behind. Because that, that for me is, it's not just as Laura noted in hers. The issue of just the road is, is that road going to be sufficient when those lots are fully developed?
Well, you, I mean, if you look at the overall, you have multiple.
Yeah, but the, the residents are going to be.
Using that one.
Right.
And, but most of the development also happens on the other side.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
But, yeah, I mean.
That, that for me is just my one concern is. Looking at what's happened to the Meyer lot.
Oh. The drive-throughs, but these.
Because of what, again, I don't know what's going to be there. Yeah, but.
Which are permitted.
I mean, I, I understand. Mr.'s point, the other thing that stuck out to me on the plans. There's a ten-foot wide underground easement for DTE on the front part of that parcel. That won't prevent them from building something there, but either Menards or somebody is going to have to relocate that if you wanna build within the easement. I would think. That is your, that's their, your question, but. Just means there's some limitations probably to what they can do without spending some. Do a, I'm sure you can DT and do anything, shove enough money in them.
Well, then maybe the, uh, question for our consultants about any future traffic concerns, um, OHM or. Carlisle-Wartman.
So I would just note that any new use that goes into any of the Menards lot, we're gonna probably require a traffic study. Um, and so there probably will be additional traffic measures. Um, that would have to be implemented as part of that future development. I mean. We're looking at this particular development now and the access that's provided. Uh, it's an existing driveway, so the road commission didn't have to review this. I don't think they reviewed this project, but, um, Stacy can correct me if I'm wrong. And then, um, you know. Any new, any new development, we're gonna require them to do their own traffic study, so.
Sidewalks. Sidewalks up and down both sides.
Thank you for doing that.
Yep.
Any other? What are folks? Thinking?
What, what, what are, what are we doing tonight? We've already approved it once.
No, we, it was the conditional use we approved. So now, because this has been a by right. Development and we, this would be the last time we would see it. It goes through final engineering. And then goes to the Board of Trustees.
And I think they've answered most of my questions.
I'm prepared to support this. I would like a condition with respect to their initial bylaws and documents, compliance with their sustainability. Plan, but that you might have other things. So I'm prepared to move that based on the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of the meeting. The planning commission finds that the site plan, a number two four zero one zero, towns at Honey Creek. Meets the required standards and findings for site plan approval pursuant to section thirty-six. Dash one eighty of Scioto Township's zoning ordinance and recommends approval. The site plan is granted with the following conditions. I have three of them. One is that the concerns noted in the township planner's review are addressed. Do we need to put that date? Nine ten?
Yep.
And the concerns noted in the township engineer's review dated.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty are addressed. And three, that the applicant condo association bylaws and documents comply with the directives and goals set forth. In Scioto Township Sustainability Plan and be reviewed by Township Council beforehand.
What do you think about being solar ready?
And, and I would just say that, uh, we recommend that, we can only recommend. That, that development meets the, um, it, it would be the, I, I E. CC. Twenty twenty-one energy code.
So, so the, the, the planning commission recommends.
That, that the development meet the I E C C twenty twenty-one energy code. And it's only a recommend, we can only recommend at this point.
Well, that's all this is.
Well, I mean, the B O T can all recommend.
I E C C. Twenty twenty-one?
Yes. And it would be the residential energy code.
I can hand you this if you want it. And I see what you're saying. You're saying that we recommend to the board that they recommend.
Yeah.
Though, though that, that would be my motion as accepted as friendly with the.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Further discussion? Walkable, please?
Right, sir.
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Moore.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Hyde.
Yes.
Silverton.
Yes.
What is your goal to break ground?
In the spring.
I heard they're selling fast already.
Hope is to start, start in the spring and, uh, have, have the site paved by this time next year.
Awesome. Be great.
You'll have a new street.
All right.
nearby.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna move to our, uh, discussion on the renewable energy.
I think you added an item prior to that.
We did, sorry.
So in.
Our, our resolution.
Yeah. So, um, Stacy, you'll appreciate this. Um, I move that the, um, planning commission. Have a resolution to the Board of Trustees to work with O N, OHM and. Uh, et cetera, to provide an accurate. Account of regarding the R U's data, including existing allocations.
I'll second support, but I, I do have some discussion on that and isn't this something that's going to take money? Because, so do, do we need to say that the Board of Trustees, um, procure. The services or the, they, they find out or procure at OHM to, to look into it. Cause they have to true it up because toilets are better and people change usage. Hopefully we're fixing our leaks in our system and we're, we're doing things that's, that are meant to tighten it up. So. This, I mean, I don't know if Stacy or Matt, I guess Stacy tonight are there, but this is a. An art and a process, right?
Yes. Why don't we have?
So I, I can read a couple of things into the record just briefly. So to give background before I read this. Kathy Knoll, myself, Gillian and Brandon from the Water and Sewer Department met with Matt Parks at the end of August. Um, after the Jackson Road Overlake District Committee or Advisory Committee. Came up with the concern about R U's. It's been brought up here, it's been brought up there, it's been brought up at the board, as we all know. Um, so Matt's email includes a summary. Last meeting study was twenty twenty-one-ish. Showed two thousand two hundred and thirty-three R U's remaining in Jackson District. There's two districts. And eleven hundred remaining in Liberty District, so three thousand three hundred and thirty-three in total. Since then, mid-two thousand twenty-one, we theoretically used, theoretically used about thirteen hundred R U's. Five ninety-five in Woodview, two seventy-three in Trailwoods, hundred and seventy-six in Sciow View. Eighteen fourteen at Severn, they used less than they had. Um, eighty-four in minor water user developments, miscellaneous. Only other one we know that for sure is coming is Crossroads at one seventy-seven total. Some have already been approved, thirty-nine, I think, with the prior office project. If you add those up, you have twelve hundred and ninety-one R U's used in totals. Remember this is theoretical, so it's very possible that this is less than actually physically entering the system at this time. If you take the three thousand three thirty-three total capacity, bias to twelve hundred and ninety-one. Used since mid-two thousand twenty-one, you have just over two thousand R U's remaining in total across the whole country. It's unknown if Ann Arbor really cares about the Jackson versus Liberty situation. Eagle doesn't. Eagle did at one time, they changed. Jackson pump station will need to be evaluated for pump capacity as well. We looked into this at very high level in twenty twenty. We evaluated about eight hundred, eight fifty. R U's conservatively before Eagle would become concerned. This is why it was something on the C I P to address the pump station next couple of years. We'll do, I'll do it in a few years soon, but after Brad makes progress in sewer cleaning and rehab, I'll do this only recently approved by the board. Uh, Sally can put this to do much more sophisticated strategy at some point. If I send that to you, I'm happy to send it to the whole board.
Yeah, could you send that to us and maybe put that in our?
Sure. And, and it was about an hour and forty-five minute conversation to get to that point.
However, that still doesn't address the ones that have been allocated.
Correct.
Which needs to happen too.
I also had a conversation with a gentleman who I happen to know who works at a school of information at U of M. They have some government-related students that are looking to do projects and there might be an opportunity to use them to. Do some data entry and data research and G I S work. That's a very informal interim conversation. We'll probably tell them after.
In general terms, just to take away, we have about two thousand that aren't allocated.
Two thousand that we have capacity theoretically for. We have about eight hundred capacity at the Jackson Road pump site. Liberty Road pump site has. I don't know how much it probably has even more than that.
So does that mean we have two thousand, eight hundreds of which are at, at, at Jackson?
Are you saying that's what it can pump?
That's what the pump can handle. There's two, in some ways, there's limiting factors. That's the limiting factor right now, so Jackson pump.
It's one limiting factor, but it's a liberty pump.
If the Liberty, the Liberty pump is like Crossroads.
Yeah, Liberty pump would mostly handle Crossroads, is my understanding.
Yeah.
So that's not gonna put the strain on Jackson.
Do they, do they connect? Is it all one system that has two pumps sucking it out?
That's a good question for O H M.
How about that, Stacy?
I believe you're correct. It's all one system.
Two outlets being pumped separately.
And isn't there also a piece on? Maple, the northern, what's that maple one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the, um, the Saginaw Woods, Saginaw Hills, Saginaw.
Well, that ridge.
Well, that ridge.
There is, but that is much smaller, at least from what our conversation was.
But I think somehow we need to have a document. I think this is what Kim, we're getting to.
There's a lot of talk, a lot of chit chat. And, and in terms of planning, we need more than.
Something we can make decisions on.
That's great.
Yes.
And, and I would go a step further, but I'm not trying to do that in this resolution. We should be using our G I S system and have a database of what these, what this is, that we can go and look at. Now, people keep saying, well, it costs some money, but we spend a lot of money on a lot of different things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think it's worth it. This is a tool that would help us know instantly. The database would be instantly accessible.
If it was reading data in all the time, in which.
Well, yeah, somebody has to put the data in.
We have to get the data too.
Yes, we do need to get the data.
So it's a whole system.
So you heard that, that memo, that, uh, email and you don't feel like we got the data either. I sort of like, our problem is, there's all these guesstimating, estimating. I mean, I do understand some of the people called to me.
Can you read that? Did you, is that?
I can read that if you want.
No, no.
Resolution.
That I'm gonna call the question on.
Uh, I move that, uh, Planning Commission, uh, sent a resolution to the Board of Trustees to work with O H M and others to provide an accurate account of our used data and including existing allocations. So for instance, we've been talking, Doug has brought up that there's already a list of, 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 that, oh, let me back up. I think Stacy has explained to me before that some properties did not even buy into, um, the R U's system. And some properties did. So the ones that did have allocations, we don't even know which ones they are. And that, that we don't have to know how much waste is coming through the system. That's just one thing is like, but some, obviously somebody needs to find out who that is. And I understand in our last J-Rod meeting that, uh, Doug alluded, Doug alluded to the fact that there was a list of that stuff. But anyway, it just feels a little helter-skelter to me. So I think we need to deal with it. And the reason I'm suggesting that this resolution is a way to do it is to stop chatting about it at every committee meeting I'm in and let's make some decisions. The board says we don't wanna deal with it.
Permission to work, permission to work.
Yeah, to commi- commission the work. Okay, to add commission, not work with, but commission the work.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, like, yeah, here's your check, but give us our data.
Well, and we're not prescribing how to do it. It's just, we, we need it.
We need it.
We need it. Yeah.
Cause we've been talking about it for a couple of years.
Here.
Okay. Do you want to amend it at all to make it a little bit stronger or is to work with or commission? O H, well, commission.
Well, that's why I, I would, that's why I asked her for, you, you haven't written that down?
Yep.
Let me read what I got, make sure that, that's what Kim said, yeah. Resolution to the Board of Trustees that the board worked with O H M to provide an accurate account of R U usage, including current allocations. Permission to work?
Just, yeah, I would say O H M and the Utilities Department.
O H M and Utilities, okay.
And, and allocate the resources needed to do so.
And allocate resources. Needed.
Time and money.
Do so. I don't know why we're avoiding this expenditure. It can't get done without effort.
Right, and we recognize that. And that's why adding that is.
For bringing it up.
Support.
Okay.
So the, the B O, the, 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 the B O T work with O H M and.
Utilities.
Utilities Department and allocate the resources needed to provide an accurate account of R U, R U usage. And what?
Including.
Including current.
Existing current allocations.
Current.
Yep, current sign.
Okay.
And you had that upfront. And allocating the needed resources to make it happen.
You have that. I allocate the resources needed.
Okay.
Uh, to provide an accurate account of the R U usage, including current allocation.
Mr. Hyde seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Please understand, as you talked to the board about this, we're not trying to tell the board what to do. We're just trying to find an avenue to force us to.
This comes up at the board.
Deal with this issue.
The board is gonna come up tomorrow on Crossroads.
Check out the moment, have the resources to actually do this.
That's.
Oh, yeah.
Are you talking the, the, the money or, eh, is, oh, can O H M do it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Good question.
Well, Stacy's probably listening.
Well, if they can't do it, let's move off of them. I'm sure we can find some engineers.
I'm, I'm sure they can.
I'm sure they can do it.
From, from the discussion.
Okay, folks.
Moving on, moving on. It's, it's five to ten.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Solar ordinance. Okay, Laura, please get through.
I think we're getting pretty close here on this ordinance. Um, we've talked about it, uh, at least four times that I know of. Um, you have the cover memo where I made, um, five, uh, changes or five notations here of potential changes. On page one, after our last discussion, there was, um, some comment about adding a definition of nameplate facility. Um, that's not a term that's defined in the statute. Um, I checked around with some others in my office and we felt that instead of creating a definition, which is never, never a good thing to just create your own definition. Um, we have added facility in parentheses as part of the nameplate capacity definition. Um, that's really what the, the nameplate facility is, is named for. It's, it's based on the capacity that it is allowing. Um, so that's how we, that's how we rectified that comment. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Elegant.
Okay, um, and then page eight and nine kind of go together. Um, um, we had always in here had, um, when we're talking about non-C R O, right? These are, these are non-C R O or non-utility scale projects. Um, as a conditional use, um, solar energy systems and battery facilities on greater than five acres in any zoning district would be considered a conditional use. And it, and so that's always been five acres. And then, as you know from our last discussion, on page nine, um, you can see that the table has been modified dramatically, actually, since our last, this is the largest change since our last conversation. Um, yeah, um, so we're saying five megawatt or less facilities or and or thirty acre maximum have certain, um, lesser setbacks, fifty feet from the property line. And those over five megawatts and over thirty acres have to abide by a hundred feet from property lines, um, and adjacent right of ways. This, of course, is for your discussion purposes, so I wanted to talk about the acreage together and the setbacks to see if this is something that, um, you were comfortable with.
But you cleaned up the table.
Say again?
But you cleaned up the table nicely.
I cleaned it up and I just wanna make sure everyone agrees with how I, what I said.
I guess the only question I have is, eh, a, a lot of prop, I don't know, farm properties are like forty acres. And wondering. I mean, so forty acres would automatically go into that hundred foot.
Yep.
And it, yes, it would.
And, but that's still a lot less than the three hundred feet.
Yep.
A hundred feet keeps it away, because you do have an area where the property.
And it's going to be a big raise on there.
And the dimensions of a thirty acre site are?
Fifty feet from the property.
Well, that would, that would be if it's, if, if it's no more than a thirty acre size. Then it would be, then if it's a, um, a larger site, meaning it would be, it could be a larger solar development, it would have a larger setback.
But fifty, like, so let's say a five acre.
Mm-hmm.
Five megawatts, I apologize, or less on it, but thirty acres. Max. So it could be five acres, ten acres. So let's say it's five acres and your property is next to that, fifty feet from your property line is pretty close.
No. And most of the, I don't know, most of our residential
one year thirty, right?
Are, have thirty.
Thirty feet setbacks.
Yeah, so you'd be.
Accessory building, kind of things.
Not for accessory.
But I mean, it would be an accessory, it would be a topless ball.
Well, this would doesn't, doesn't, yeah. But if it was, but if it was on a lot, yeah, it would be an accessory. This is if it's the sole.
That would change.
Use on a site.
So, yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking about visibility. Like, if you're fifty feet from the property line, that's pretty visible to your neighbor.
Yeah, but there are other screening provisions, et cetera, in this.
We just read.
Screening and, and technically ground, any ground mount is supposed to be fenced.
And we're talking about from the fence. So I, I believe if it requires a fence, you. Hmm, they all do. So, so from the property line, the first thing you'll see is a fence.
Oh.
And then it'll be, the solar arrays will be inside of that. And then, I don't know, is there any conventional requirement for that law?
Say that again, Mr. Hyde.
From the fence that surrounds the solar field. Um, within that fence line, how close can, or do we have any setbacks within that for the, where the first solar arrays are? Or is it just for their convenience to get around?
So I've seen different fences located differently for different solar projects. So some fences are located along the property line where, you know, where they're not around a right of way. And some are located further in from the property, enclosing, you know, the solar array at the setback. So it really just depends on the project and the location and, and, you know, if, if there are natural features or other things, they won't, they won't put a fence through natural features far away from where the, the, um, arrays are going to be located, per se.
So, so I was incorrect to say that the fence is the first thing that it'll be setback from the property line of fifty feet, you know, or a hundred feet?
Yeah, it may not be fif- the fence may not be setback that far, but the solar array will be.
Okay, so I was thinking about Ron.
Yeah, yeah, it's, these setbacks are for the solar array.
So I have a question for you, Laura. The, um, the fifty foot setbacks. Um. Is this something that's, that you've seen in other ordinances or is this some standard thing that you've run across?
Well, this is based on last time, if you remember, um, we had a particular property that was interested in potentially having solar. And in looking at the, uh, required setbacks, they were much greater. I think they were three hundred feet. It didn't allow for any, uh, buildable area for these arrays on that property based on the topography, the existing natural features. And I believe that was a seven acre site. And so by reducing these, we're allowing for, um, you know, uh, an area, you know, to allow for, for these types of smaller scale facilities. And, uh, you know, requiring fifty feet from the property line. The, you know, you have to remember, if it's five acres or more, this is also a conditional use. And so you can, as through the conditional use process, require additional screening or additional, um, mechanisms to alleviate, um, you know, off-site, uh, intrusions or, you know, invisibility issues, um, in, in, during the conditional use approval. So, I mean, every community is, is, is looking at these differently. Um, Sciop is the most open community that I work in, um, regarding, you know, you, you all seem like you're, um, wanting to work, um, and have these smaller scale facilities, having reduced setbacks. Um, a lot of the communities I work in, uh, they, they aren't, they aren't, um, looking at these, at these, these reductions. It'd be more like a hundred feet.
Right, and, and their concern is, is it being so close to, to, uh, another person's property, another residential property.
Some of that, some of that, I mean, visibility, there, there, you know, a, a, a lot of, a lot of communities just don't want these at all. And so I think that's a mechanism that they think they can use to box them out, right? Uh, make it really difficult to find a build, to have a buildable area on, in a small, um, on a small lot. I don't really recommend doing that. I mean, I don't wanna.
Is that gonna fly?
No, I don't think it will. I mean, it, it becomes exclusionary zoning, right? Yeah.
With the state law?
Yeah, well, and I do think, the other thing I think is by making a conditional use, you do have the ability to say, you know, if it's gonna be extremely visible, you can increase those setbacks. You know, for, so you, you do have, um, by making that the conditional use, then you can look at.
Point of order, it's at your ten o'clock. Uh, we have five minutes more, ten minutes more. Or, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm, I believe shortly, I'm just leaving.
I would just say this, I am not in favor of the fifty feet.
Okay, it's still a point of discussion.
Yeah, I, 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 I would like it to be a hundred feet and the other one two hundred, three hundred, but I just thought it'd be not there.
Not on the record.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just one person.
Your board is not today.
Yeah. And, and we still need to have Mariah's input on it and there are some, and, and the other thing that we're doing is we're preparing for hopefully enactment of community solar because right now, the likelihood of any of this being able to happen is virtually nonexistent. Because, because, well, you'd have to have a utility that would be interested in, in developing it on this, uh, smaller parcels, which they.
They are.
They aren't because it's not economical for them. So, yeah.
So I only had two other, um, things on the times of the essence here. So, um, we talked about fencing a little bit and whether the fencing in here that we've written in here, um, meets the requirements of the electrical code. We're only required to do that as part of the C R O. Um, if it, you know, if, um, if it is a smaller scale facility, we can ask for, uh, for different fencing. Um, in Augusta, where they, I, they just approved, I don't, I don't know, fifteen hundred acres of solar. Um, they use what they call agriculture fencing, which is basically wood, wood-framed, uh, wire mesh fencing that is around the perimeter of their project. So I think that we have some flexibility, um, for those projects that aren't, you know, through the state-regulated nameplate portion, um, of the ordinance. And then lastly, um, there was a provision in here that was in our, um, template that talked about planning commission setback increase and decrease. That provision has been removed. Um, we could only discuss potential additional setbacks, um, additional increase in setbacks if through the conditional use process, but we can't, you know, the planning commission can't decrease setbacks. That would be through the zoning board of appeals if this, um, ordinance were to be adopted. That would be through the Zoning Board of Appeals if this, um, ordinance were to be adopted. So, that's all I have. Um, I know that we still have some questions about, um, setbacks and such, but I think we're getting close to where we need to have some, um, consideration by Mariah. Um, and I'll look to you to, when you're comfortable to do that, if it's, if it's at this draft, or if you wanted to have another discussion before that happens. But I think we're getting pretty close to being ready to do that.
Yeah, I, I think we can have Mariah review it, and then, uh, the other thing is to and, and maybe we can do another visual about the fifty-foot versus the hundred-foot with the thirty acres. You know, just, uh, um, and that would, I think, help. And then, uh, have a clear understanding of, um, the conditional use so that it's, because, yeah, and, and we can talk about the setbacks, because Mariah's.
So, because my reaction to what you're saying about the conditional use is, how can we say, we're gonna give you more constraints? We're gonna impose on you more constraints through the conditional use, but our ordinance says you can have these level of setbacks.
Well, just like any conditional use, it, it allows you to look at what the impacts are uh, to adjacent neighbors, et cetera, because that's the whole purpose of the conditional use. It is, it's very hard, you, you wanna encourage these things, but you also don't want it to be in an inappropriate setting. That, halfway decent explanation?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, um, are we okay with Mariah doing the review, and then?
Thank you, Laura, for all your contributions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, reports and commission activity, I've moved, and we postponed those reports, okay? And we did get a, uh, a planning activity report, and I assume there'll be another one coming up?
From Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, nice one, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, I just wanna remind people of the Sustainability Fair, uh, October sixth.
Eleven to three?
What?
Eleven to three, Meyer Park.
Eleven, eleven to three, Meyer, next to the garden, I saw him.
Oh, I thought it was one.
It's eleven to three.
Okay, and are we sending our watch starting at?
Hot ten. I invited Debbie Dingle to the fair, but I think I said one. I think I just gave her the date, October sixth.
Okay, you can, yeah, just email Georgia and tell her, yeah, and these are the hours.
Okay.
Well, do we have a flyer? I mean.
Yes, we do have a flyer.
I didn't print it out, John.
John has it.
You got the flyer, and you can email it to us.
I did get the flyer, you sent it to me?
I sent it, no, I sent it to E S T F, but I can send it to you.
Is it one, eleven to what?
Eleven to three.
I printed one up, someday one.
The E V's are ten to
You did that, yeah.
Ten to three, I think the E V's will be there at ten.
Cars or the bikes?
The cars, the bikes will be with us. And there's also a bike repair workshop, so bring a bike if you need a fix.
Awesome. That move wheels, wheels.
It's common, common cycle.
Oh.
Yeah, all right. What kind of repair?
You're smiling.
Yeah, yeah, I, I work, I, yeah, that's my data, I work with that.
Oh, yeah, that's cool, all right.
Public comment.
A public comment? We open public comment at ten thirteen.
Anybody?
We have no one here, so, I like no one.
Thank you for attending.
Yes.
Move your journal.
Oh, did she write her end up?
Yes. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna bring up one other thing about the R U issue, is there's, um, watching the J-Rod and talking to the Utilities Director, I followed the sewer for a long time, is, um, there's a holding pond, because our current contract, uh, to the best of my knowledge, it has a certain daily amount on Jackson that we can, um, you know, discharge to the sewer system in Ann Arbor. I just wanna bring that, that may be something that ever, the Planning Commission needs to think about, too, when they talk to the board. Thank you, it was a good meeting.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Any other?
In time to adjourn?
No, we have to move, close public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Second, support by Hyde, uh, further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Public comments closed at ten fourteen, and
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Director, Commissioner Abel, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Right, we are adjourned at ten fourteen, thank you.
Yes.